Welcome, everybody. As is traditional here in Canada, we start by acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional and unceded territory of the Kanien Kejaka, the Mohawk, at a place called Tio Tiakke, a meeting place for many of the First Nations, including the Hadonosani, the Ashineweg, and the Algonquin peoples. Our first order of business is to ask if anybody needs to declare a conflict of interest for today's meeting. Seeing none, I think we're ready to go on, and our first order of business is one of the happiest when we, as a board, get to celebrate and welcome the new and rejuvenated chapters. The resolution before us reads that the Internet Society Board of Trustees extends a warm welcome and congratulations to the U.S. Hawaii chapter, the Canada-Ontario chapter, and the Mongolia chapter, and further resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees celebrates the rejuvenation of the Namibia chapter and the Somalia chapter. I'd love to do this by acclamation, so if all of you would... We have one of the folks from the Ontario chapter with us today, as well as, in a few moments, we'll hear from the Canada chapter. The next sort of business is the community chair reports, the first of which is from Roman, who is sitting next to me, so I will turn it over to you.
Oh. Good morning, everyone. So appreciative of this opportunity to talk to you about things happening at the IETF. I've had the opportunity to do this a number of times, and I chose a new approach. Previously, we've talked a little bit about top level, how was the organization built? What are the kind of key elements? We've also spent some time talking about participation. So today, we're going to take a different tack, and we're going to focus on what is the work of the IETF. So what are new things coming in? And talk a little bit about some of the success that we've been having. Just to open and remind, yeah, no, next slide, that's great, no worries. Just to kind of remind everyone, the IETF is focused on producing open standards, and the idea here is that we want to allow for devices, services, and everything on the internet to be able to interoperate across the networks. The charm of how we do that is we do so with an open and transparent process, with the key ingredient being that it is a bottom-up approach with a multi-stakeholder process. So everyone participates in the IETF as an individual, and we have a robust participation from civil society, from industry, from academia, and from governments. I often like to remind everyone that the IETF is focused not on specifying digital public infrastructures or end-to-end services. We are building building blocks, and those building blocks are composed by industry innovation. They're composed in partnership, public-private partnerships, with governments at different levels, and this is what gives us the permissionless innovation that makes the transformative properties of the internet possible and is driving economies around the world. And we are also a voluntary standards organization in the end, so we measure our success by organizations of all flavors, governments of all flavors, picking up what is published out of the IETF and using it to deliver those transformative capabilities on the internet. Okay, enough of the organizational tales. Next slide, let's talk about the work, the most exciting part. I probably previously flashed this up, and just let me reorient you. The IETF is ultimately organized into six areas, except the notional technology kind of stack there. So we have a body of work that we call the internet area that's focused on how you move packets, units of information, across a single connection. Then, building on top of that abstraction is our routing area, and this is about how do we interconnect one network to another network? Then, building on top of those capabilities, we have our web and internet transport area, which is focused, how do I make sure that a computer on what network, given that it has a path, can communicate in an end-to-end way to the other side? And then, we have building further on top of that is in applications and real-time media area, which is a broad, broad umbrella for any number of applications and services where standardization might be required. And buttressing those four technical areas is support in the area of security to make sure all of those capabilities that are being built are robust and they're resilient. And then, of course, to work in the real world, they also, you need to be able to manage them and operate them and making sure that we have the right standardization that allows those practices to occur. And then, we work with many, many other partners in the standards development community. As I mentioned, these are building blocks. If you have kids, it's Lego building blocks. It was the way I always think about it. We work with the ITU, we work with IEEE, 3GPP typically at the lower levels of connectivity, and then working with more application-focused standards organizations like the W3C Oasis amongst kind of many, in addition to various industry consortiums, to allow these large infrastructure and services to be built for the betterment of the internet. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, while we have six areas, to decompose that, we have this unit of work called a working group. And so, this is the community getting together on specific topics. So I just wanted to give you a sense of the scale that's happening in the IETF. At this distance, even I have difficulty reading some of those numbers, so let me interpret them for you. Is, at any given point in time, the IETF is composed of about 120 to 140 different working groups. So that means simultaneously, there's that protocol innovation happening across those six areas in about 120 different bodies of work, which ultimately results in roughly 200 to 300 standards of some form being published on an annual basis. You know, I hand-wave a little bit, 120 to 140 at a given time, because the IETF is constantly changing based on the excitement about needing to do new work, and some work packages are finished. And so, that bottom chart that you also can't read, the key thing to kind of take away is that there's a green line and a red line, and they are of different sizes. And so, the green is the birth of new working groups, so that's new work coming in. And also, you see the red, which is us closing working groups, which is our belief that we have finished the necessary work right now on that particular kind of protocol. So the takeaway really is that the IETF is dynamic, while the number of working groups largely is staying the same, we're closing them and creating new ones. And so, there's a constant inflow of kind of new ideas, and we legitimately are declaring success on certain things too, because there is always the danger, you always do more, 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 but are you done? And so, this is one of those things that we're tracking, because ultimately, there's really a fixed amount of bandwidth that can be thrown at working at this problem. So this is a sense of just the shape and the size of the IETF. But let's get to the meat, what's the new work that's happening? Next slide. So we just had our meeting here, we filled this hotel quite robustly. We, in the IETF, typically start ideas with some set of proponents, and then we have a very facilitated process to bring those ideas to the community to decide whether there's rough consensus to work on them. We ask ourselves questions like, is the IETF even the right place to do this work? Maybe there's another forum. We ask ourselves whether there's sufficient interest and expertise to do that work. And we ask ourselves, how does this fit into the overall internet infrastructure? So two questions, two bodies of work, you can see them in the right column, I call those the new start pitches. So we ran, our process is called a BOF, a birds of a feather. So two topics came up for consideration. One is the authenticated transfer topic, which is a little opaque, so to unpack that a little bit. This is the decentralized social media community coming to the IETF specifically, Blue Sky. They have a series of protocols that allows them to decentralize parts of the social media kind of infrastructure, and they were interested in starting to standardize parts of that ecosystem they have, so you could have open standards around different components, first related to identity kind of storage, and allow you to interconnect a whole ecosystem of social media. And then, the other new start that was discussed is called Plants. We also like our clever names in the IETF, and that is focused on a very precise security concern, which is as we move to post-quantum cryptography, the way we create some of our resilience check in the infrastructure, the technical details called a certificate log, will change, because the size of some of those security checks now is a particular size. If we move to post-quantum cryptography, those units of checks will be much, much larger, and that means we have to move a lot more data, we have to store a lot more data, and that is, that new start was exploring, can we be a little bit more clever to make sure that what we're talking about building is more sustainable, but at the same time is secure, because it's non-negotiable really to move to post-quantum cryptography. So how do we make sure that we insert it in a way that we can ultimately operate? And then, to give you a taste of some of the other more recent starts, so these are things that we talked, I think we did, we talked about Plants on Tuesday, I think APT I think was Wednesday, Tommy is gonna, it's either Wednesday, Thursday, hot off the presses, I can't even begin to kind of tell you where we're going to head with that, the community just talked about it. But on the left side there, I'm calling the recent starts, and so this is recent starts in about the last year. These are topics that the IETF community has decided that we want to work on, and a working group has been chartered. So the IETF is now committed to providing solutions in those areas. In the security area, a couple of things happening there. There's in the seat work, there's a lot of interest to connect the things we do on the network with the additional security that we can potentially have on computers. And so, there's new special processors they're putting in computers called trusted execution environments, and what that does is that provides a lot more assurance if you have one of those. And so, this is the intent to connect the additional assurance you have in this new class of hardware with some of the network communication. The HPKE, I don't think I could explain it if you gave me a half hour in a way that's generally accessible. This is a niche cryptographic topic, and what it's effectively saying is, we've had, it's largely focused on not to trivialize the extremely hard work and critical work that's happening here. We've had a very effective cryptographic kind of mechanism that's been happening on the internet that came out of the research community. It is used very widely on the internet, but it frankly had a lot of different options. And this is really the IETF reflecting back on the operational experience of saying, we provided too much flexibility, too many different options, and it turns out, in most cases, we don't use many of those. So if we reduce the complexity, we're going to make sure we even have more adoption. So this is about simplifying and reflecting back, how do we take the operational experience of using a technology and re-standardize it in the next generation? And that's what HPKE is about. And then, we of course are always supporting the Names community with different protocols to let them manage all of the complexity of the Names community. RPP is recognizing that programmers and engineers want to build with a particular set of technologies to do the same things they're already doing now. So RPP is modernizing how one exposes that with more modern technologies. The details would be JSON, so it's a particular text format, and some of the network protocols. And DECON is a protocol already used in the wild in the Names community, very widely successful, and this is an instance where communities that already have successful implementations recognize to take things for broader penetration, they need to come to a community like the IETF to get feedback from a broad set of stakeholders. And this is about standardizing something that's already in flight. And in the applications area, and don't worry, I have a dedicated slide on AI. Of course, one can't be a credible technical organization without having a dedicated focus, so I will have that. So I won't speak very much about Webbot OFF, but the other two application areas, the Open Cloud Mesh was this recognition of numerous service providers on the internet that are exposing file sharing capability or resource sharing capability, and they're centralized in the sense of if you want access to that, you have to come and participate in their ecosystem, and they really wanted to federate amongst themselves in such a way where you could be a member of one community and still participate in the other, and they're exploring the edges of what that might look like. And then, the last body of work, the digital emblems, is a case where civil society came to the IETF. Specifically, this was pathfinding by another number of partners, but I'll just focus on the International Red Cross, that want to make the analog of the Red Cross symbol or the Red Crescent symbol that you would see, you know, red on a white background that you would see on top of a truck or on a camouflage netting to provide that treaty-based protection in conflict zones and in humanitarian zones. They wanted to have the digital equivalent of that. So how do you mark a digital asset in such a way that it ultimately can get the same class of protections that you would get in the physical world? And we have chartered a working group and kind of more focusing on that. Should I ask more questions? In terms of workers, I'm going to kind of just stop there. That's the new starts, I have a little more about other work that's happening, but I wanted to take a moment to stop and ask questions, and the next slide is about AI, if that's where you want to head. Okay, again, AI, where to even begin? You know, 20 minutes, you could have given me the rest of the day, and I could be talking to everything we're doing. There's obviously a tremendous amount of interest from policymakers to kind of tech for how AI is changing everything and anything that we're kind of working on. The IETF is trying to move at an appropriate cadence to address that, because it's going to change much of the technologies we're working with, and we're also working really hard to bring the parties that have not traditionally operated with us or with that class of technology to the IETF for standardization. Two active areas of arc, and I'm going to talk where, you know, some arcs where I believe we're heading, is there's a body of work around standardizing protocols that directly support AI operations. So two active examples are what we call AI pref, AI preferences, and I already mentioned Webbot OFF. AI preference is focused on bringing a concept of, called robots.txt, to the AI era. So for a long time, there are content producers that have things, and they needed to signal to web crawlers how to best manage the content that they have to integrate the web crawling community, make search engines and advertising possible with the content they have. So this concept is how do content owners express preferences to all parts of the AI kind of stack about how their content should be managed? A related set of activities that had its first meeting three days ago is Webbot OFF, and this is the recognition that there are lots of different automated crawlers moving around kind of the internet, and to what degree can we provide some identity and authentication to them as they come to content owners? Because right now, they're coming kind of with none, and so content producers want this, because they want to better understand who are these crawlers coming to our site, and those running those crawlers have some interest in this topic, because they are recognizing they are sometimes getting blocked, and there's no differentiation between potentially their crawler and someone else's crawler that may have multiple motives, and so it's deconflicting some of that. Networking for AI, again, could be a keynote talk, it could be a talk that runs a whole conference. So how AI is operating on the network, how AI is operating in the data center, how the workloads are changing, is changing many of the protocols we have already standardized, and it's driving new extensions, and it's going to drive new protocol work. Three select examples is that the data, I'm sorry, the energy usage of AI data centers, we've probably all kind of seen in the news, is overwhelming. And so, one of the areas that the IETF is pushing out with other SDOs to include the IEEE, is around energy-efficient metrics and making sure our protocols are capable of carrying that, and you know, talking about new protocols to really help us get our arms around to measure and kind of reason about decisions based on energy usage. We are also seeing just how the machines in the data center and across administrative domains are connected in different ways, so we need to think about how we create those routing paths, and you know, the RIFT and the LSVR working groups are examples of that. And then, we're also finding with the machine-to-machine interactions with less humans in the loops, the workloads are changing, so the identities need to be different, and that's what the whimsy activity is about. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the ITU AI Standards Exchange Initiative, which is an attempt across all the SDOs that are working on standardization in the AI space to have a single place where an organization can come to see the entire standards landscape, and this is a place where we're trying to make sure that the work of the IETF is visible as it would be with kind of the other SDOs, to really enable the entire internet community to harness all that standardization that's happening. Now, this doesn't even begin to scratch the interest in more work, and this is a place where I can speak only in generalities, because the community has not yet decided what they want to do, and there's significant interest, and we're trying to figure out what is the right level of engagement, how much to engage on, is it too soon to engage or waiting too long? And probably the two biggest places where we have a lot of excitement is around how network management will change with the benefit of AI? Is AI going to need more knobs to control how the network is operating? Is it going to need new knobs because of how it's operating? There's also tremendous interest around standardizing this idea of agent-to-agent protocols, which is, do protocols need a change from when the human is interacting with the AI? When the AIs are interacting amongst themselves, do they need protocols? And there are a number of existing kind of protocols largely that are vendor-led right now, and there's a bigger, broader industry recognition that single vendor pushes, and consortiums perhaps are not a broad enough umbrella to consider these really world-changing technologies, and the IETF is one of those venues that can sort out some of those considerations. And how we ultimately make what we do at the IETF, the standards themselves, will be changed, will change the IETF process. So, you know, how can I use AI to help me write the standards? How can I use it to vet my standards? You know, what do we do with the intellectual property associated with that, that Glenn may talk about later, you know, in the schedule? So these are all considerations we need to have, and you know, we are moving the community at the measured pace to get to decision. I am confident we will sometimes come too late to a topic, I'm sure we'll sometimes jump too quickly on a topic, as will everyone kind of in the tech industry, and so we're carefully trying to navigate the IETF through these topics. All right, cognizant of the time, we'll just kind of go to the next slide. I wanted to highlight with this. Yeah, please do.
So I saw the report that this was one of the largest meetings we've had in five years or so, certainly since post-pandemic, maybe 980 or so onsite, and then more than 800 remote. How much of that do you think is being driven by these AI topics or the new topics, and how much of it is more participation in the, let's say, more traditional topics of the IETF?
That is a very nuanced kind of question. Let me try to, having not analyzed everything from this meeting, this is actually one of the things that we're going to do. I think there's two ways to answer the question. We are absolutely seeing new participants come to the IETF that have never participated at all, and their drive is AI-only, and they're to some degree unaware of some of the long history of all the other work, so they're brand new to the IETF. That's very, very exciting. We are trying as hard as possible to provide frankly more informal facilitation and help onboard those parties that just don't understand the process, and recognize we have to change our processes to make sure we have a big enough tent to include everyone in the process. I think the other way I would answer this question is, how we did business in the past is not going to work in the real world and moving forward. So many of the topics that might be considered the old traditional topic, they're not going to exist, and they're going to have to evolve to these new models. So pulling it apart, I don't know if I can easily tell what I can easily comment on is, yes, we absolutely have new participants in that. Those companies frankly did not probably exist sometimes two or three years before. They are new to the IETF. I hope that we are creating the forum for them to stay, because I think it's critical for the health of the organization to do so. Charles, you have a question?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I'm very interested in looking at what, you know, also the last slide about your work or your new work on AI. I think that is actually, well, obviously very important, because the way I look at it is like people talk about AI forgetting that it actually exists on the internet, and they forget about, you know, they could be building their own data centers and huge data centers, but I'm starting to think, okay, what are they going to do about linking them together? And are they doing what they need to do? So I think it's very important work. My question is really more about how you, when you're thinking about developing or working under standards space or some of the related policies relating to AI, how do you anticipate IETF working with other existing or other, you know, existing or non-existing or new organizations or governments and so on that are working in the same space? What do you anticipate the role of IETF to be in those space? Because it may be different from the internet, because we're, you know, IETF started doing everything, you know, related to the internet since the beginning, but AI is not like that, right? So how do you anticipate this new model or, you know, make it most effective and contributory in terms of IETF's role in AI?
I think right now, I would say we have two different approaches to that. One, I would say is we are recognizing that the class of participants that want to come to the IETF on topics like the AI may not be so familiar with how we've done in the past, and frankly, it may not be the way we would have engaged some of those parties. The structural processes are challenging for them to have meaningful contributions, so we are trying to think as creatively as possible how we can get them to the discussion kind of with us, and for us to join them in their forums to have discussion, and then collaboratively, we pathfind what the role would ultimately be. So kind of two examples, and I'm sorry, Tommy, I'm going to steal a little bit of your thunder, is we've been really benefiting from the IABs holding what I call pre-standardization activities, which is they are holding workshops that have a different set of rules about how they are convened, and that has frankly allowed a different set of stakeholders to participate and provide more direct and transparent feedback about where their roadmap is, and that helps us inform, you know, convening under rules other than everything is fully documented and attributed to kind of a person, Chatham House rules and whatnot. And then, also, I probably spoke kind of too quickly when we talked about how we've been running meetings. We have really had a lot of success with what we call side meetings, which is another pre-standardization activity. It's, you know, it's well before BOF, and if you, I mean, you know, the IETF in another era, we would have called those a bar BOF, and we certainly don't want that and to go back to that time. And so, we're trying to provide a better forum for the different parties to come together under more flexible rules, that they're not instantly kind of bound by how we do it, to help us pathfind. What we're also finding is many of those stakeholders are moving very fast themselves, and so their positions from meeting to meeting is even changing in how they want to engage them, and we're just trying to find the right finesse to, you know, to really remind them, ultimately, the value proposition for us is we are going to work on making the internet kind of be kind of successful, and we are about the forum and the set of rules, and we're trying to make sure we calibrate the rules relative to that. And again, to kind of reiterate on how to work with others, we're also making sure that we don't necessarily demand everyone comes to us to resolve that, we want to get to them and operate in their forums as well. Yeah, very nuanced and detailed topic, great question, though, thank you. Yes, man? Oh, I'll let you facilitate.
I'm Sagreka.
Yeah.
So I have a question, like you were talking about the standardization and community engagement process. So in that case, regarding the network management, how do we get the community input? How do we get involved with the community for the idea process?
I mean, a great question. I think the answer to that is no different on AI as it is in any other set of technologies, the IETF advances. We push with our, what I perceive to be our very flexible approach to contribution in the multi-stakeholder process, one of the things in the last three years that we have pushed very hard coming out of the COVID pandemic. I may have talked a little bit about this last night when we were together, so I apologize if I'm repeating ourselves, to make sure that our remote participation is as high quality as possible, and to the degree that the remote participation allows you to make kind of full contribution in that, we hope is the mechanism we can use to reach all the places and all the communities that may have found it more difficult to come to our traditional process. We are also trying, and Tommy's probably going to talk about it too, to make sure that, just as I said, kind of on the AI topic, we've created a welcoming place where the organizations or individuals can contribute on our terms, but we're also trying to get to different communities to raise awareness that we are working on these topics to the degree we can at those venues, kind of collect that feedback and bring it back, but really, we want to make sure those communities inject it live in real time, and so we're not in this situation of kind of proxying. So if you have specific recommendations of where, you know, where there might be pockets or communities we need to connect, I mean, we welcome that, whether it's a venue, kind of groups or something more structural.
Do you have different level of communities or different level of inputs?
No, the IETF process does not allow for that. It is fundamentally one level, one level process. Everyone comes as an individual, the individual does not change their standing based on where they come from, no.
Because I'm asking this question because be part of an academia, because we are dealing with the different levels, like professionals, students, and the individuals as well in the networking community.
Yes.
So how do we get involved, all this community, in that process?
Yes, that's a great question. If you would let me differ, I think Tommy is going to talk about the Internet Research Task Force, which is a whole dedicated effort in the IETF to bring in the research community that's focused not on the engineering challenges of today, where you're making design trade-offs but for the technology horizon in the future, and we have a robust, robust community of, I think it's 18 active research groups across a lot of new technologies, that's exactly that, in addition to lots of structural support mechanisms for those more inclined on the academic track. By the numbers, though, in the standardization process, academia represents one-fifth of everyone who participates in the IETF, so it's at least 20%, sometimes more.
Thank you.
And I know I'm over time, so.
Yeah, so two questions, probably could ask this on Wednesday, but I didn't feel like it. When, because it always starts Pandora's box. When it comes to using AI, it would be interesting over time, I know you're a stats person, like, as we use it, forget the standards for a moment, but using as a tool to generate content, it might be interesting to see what our output looks like over time in terms of, you know... our output looks like over time in terms of, you know, offloading tedious work, like, you know, go do all the U M L work for me or whatever it is, or yada, yada. You know, or YAML or whatever. So that'd be interesting to know over time is, you know, people generating, it'd be also interesting, is there any qualitative degradation trying to create original content with it? Because I just wrote two drafts for fun while you were talking and it works pretty well, actually, just saying, write me a draft and off it goes. And kind of funny to watch it. That's the first thing. The second thing is you had mentioned some of the protocols that are being worked on. There's some, how do you feel about, this is the real question, how do you feel about the work we're going to do here versus what's going on in industry? Because there's, there's industry players, I'm not going to name them, that are working on protocols that ideally you would want to do here to get, you know, to get buy-in. But those external entities quite have quite a bit of money and they don't necessarily, they're not matched against the efficiency goals we're looking at. So like I can think of one protocol very specifically on a very, very GPU, you know, uh, like a vendor that produces a lot of GPUs. And that, you know, that private protocol is definitely not going down the path of making things efficient and trying to reduce power load, et cetera. It's all about
Right.
Different kinds of efficiencies. So what's your thoughts on how we're going to gain momentum there?
I think it's a really about level setting, what is winning and what is the race you think you are running? The game we are probably, well, the game we are, the race we are running is very clearly not. The more we standardize, the more successful we are. So this isn't about market share and wanting to standardize the, the most. What I would frame our success around is we're about where interoperability is needed. There can be any number of, I think, cases where there's industry consortions that, uh, that may not need the interoperability. I think you hit on one thing, I, I, you could, you could have talked about AI, but you could equally talked about, you know, Yang and kind of data modeling, you know, are we moving fast enough? We could always move faster, but again, part of I think our success in the I T F is the deliberate process which we move. And the, the speed and cadence we move at is also directly connected to, uh, how much participation and how much enfranchisement we get. If we want multi-stakeholder, you can't always move necessarily at the speed of, you know, open source where agreement is a PR and, you know, commit, we're encountering production. That really lends itself to a very small set of stakeholders disenfranchising civil society, disenfranchising the cadence of kind of academia. Certainly not at the cadence of policymakers. So I, I don't, I mean, I, I don't have kind of the answer. I mean, this is kind of part of the consideration. And, uh, you know, on the AI, I am, again, I, I'll open with what I said before. I am confident that there are topics in AI we should have moved out, moved out on, so we've been too slow. I am also confident we will leap into topics in the AI, we leaped too quickly. And we will be in good company with the rest of the tech industry. And this is a sense what we're trying to manage. I think while, you know, the, the top line, we want to be in the business where interoperability is required and we're standardizing things people want. Uh, and that, those would be my first principles. And on the idea of, uh, of like, you know, the, using AI to leverage and make standards efficient, absolutely. And I would change the verb tense. The question is, where would we start that metric out? Because we're already in the past, I just don't know how far in the past to go that it's already kind of, kind of happening. But you're, you're spot on. I mean, people are trying to make drafts and this is the thing, Glenn doesn't mention it, that I'm not sure what our community consultation process is going to be. But we need to provide guidance to the trust on what to do with the I T F, uh, intellectual property and you, in relation to what the, how it might be used kind of in, in the AI, uh, kind of space for derivative works or whatnot. So, yeah, long conversation, but yeah.
Yeah. So, um, there was a question that I think I posed to you one year ago or some few months ago. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, uh, but I want to ask what is the update on the diversity participation, which I did ask, um, when you made your previous presentation. What efforts have you made towards it, uh, towards that? And is, are there challenges and are there ways you feel that we can also help or support? What you're doing if there are challenges? I was hoping, of course, you mentioned you were not going to talk about participation stuff during this conversation. And I did not, but I was going to pass. But I felt like I should still ask this question, what efforts are being made?
Yeah, of course. I mean, that's a great question. That's the perennial question because all this technical work is predicated on having that multi-stakeholder participation. Without it, we are not going to get the great outcomes in those topics. So I think since we last talked, I mean, the structural mechanisms we have continued to double down on is making sure that the remote participation works as great as it can. One of the studies that we've done since the last time we talked is, uh, because I know there's a lot of skepticism that remote participation, uh, it really leads to real inclusion in, in the standards process. We did a comprehensive study of RFCs published in the last four years and looked at the authors, which, you know, with this notional idea from, you know, the academic model, which is not very clear that the authors are significant drivers of that. And we asked ourselves, how many of those authors in the last four years of those RFCs did not participate onsite? With the sixteen-year lookback period, because that's as good as our data. And we found that almost forty percent of all RFCs that we minted in the last four years had at least one participant that had never come onsite. And so this gave us a lot of confidence that the structural support we have around bringing remote participation in directly into the process allows for meaningful intervention, uh, and meaningful kind of participation in the process. So we're going to continue to lean into it. The other piece that we've launched since the last time we talked is a recognition that you may have the technical skills or the technical, uh, kind of requirements that you want to bring to the I T F, but there's barriers to that. And so we've minted a, a number of new training programs to explain not the work of the I T F, so not this talk, but a talk about how do you bring your ideas and inject it effectively and efficiently, uh, in, in, into the process? So we actually now have a full one-day kind of session that we make available and we run prior to our meetings to help those that have ideas that want to bring it to the I T F to make them more effective, uh, in it. And one of the, the other structural things we're looking at is the efficiency of some of the peer-to-peer mentoring, uh, we do for participants that are coming and want to be navigated through the process. Does that change the outcomes in their participation?
Uh, thank you very much. Did you have more slides or?
If I am out of time, I could end here. If, uh, you know, if you want to give me another minute or two, I could introduce this topic and then I can be done. It's up to you.
Should you introduce it?
Ah, yeah. Phenomenal questions. Thank you. This is actually very much like the, uh, like the way I love to engage, happy to follow up on any of these. I, I just wanted to leave you with one set of slides. I talked about the future and so I, I want to be cognizant of the fact that we also need to have delivered on the things we promised. If I would have given this talk two or three years ago. So here are a couple of very recent highlights of things we have published in the last year. Uh, one is again, a lot of excitement around post-quantum cryptography. This is critical for the public key infrastructure, which underpins routing and all sorts of communication security. We have published the standard that allows you to bring post-quantum algorithms into certificates. Uh, we have been supporting civil aviation with them doing, uh, that community being able to with, in a, in a decentralized way, allowing them to do identification of, of drones, which is unmanned aerial systems, which is, you know, has been a perennial kind of topic in, in recent years. Uh, we have rebooted investment on some of our core protocols around spam mitigation. It's a technology called DMARC. And this is, uh, example of what I previously talked about, which is we had a technology, we had a lot of field experience for how it was working or not working. And this is the reinvestment in that. And then the I T F has ultimately partners with our, uh, partners with other organizations in the technical community, within the names and numbers community. And R D A P is a key protocol related to managing that. And, you know, that there's always evolution that needs to happen in those. And these are two critical features that that community wanted, which was to improve, improve the searchability of those data sets in a standardized protocol. And also to provide more policy information, in this case, geographical effort. And then I'll, I'll just leave it at that, uh, with the, the segment routing. So did you want to? Yeah, I did. So, uh, before I got off the stage again, I, I thank you so, so much for, for the time. I, I didn't want to leave the stage without a thank you. Uh, the one thing that we did not talk about, which I assume Sally has or will continue to kind of talk about, is the criticality of the WISIS plus twenty process that has occurred. And, uh, this really is existential to making sure that we continue to operate the internet in open and resilient fashion. And I want to really acknowledge the phenomenal partnership that has, that occurred between the I T F and the Internet Society. And by name, I really want to call these key stakeholders that we worked with and we outwatched and with, with awe for how definitely they really took the message of that free and open internet to that community. So thank you to Olaf, uh, Mona Gabala, Sebastian, Tatiana Tropeina, Isarosa, Dan York, Dalit Beckley, Carl Gunberg, Ryan Polk and Adrian Wan, who I personally worked with, uh, with them through a two WISIS process to date. Uh, I know Tommy did, uh, it's amazing work that they are doing in ensuring that the internet is there for everyone. So I just wanted to acknowledge that in the, in the public record. And of course Sally, Sally's leadership goes without saying.
Well, Sally has definitely also praised your leadership in this and we thank you and the others who've been involved in the WISIS plus twenty, uh, which is a great segue because one of the people involved in that, uh, was our colleague, uh, Tommy, who's going to be here talking about, uh, the role of the I A B and.
And the very first topic I have is our contributions.
They can actually see you.
Okay, I'll come over.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you. Happy to follow up with anyone for any of those topics. Again, it's never enough time, one hundred twenty-five working groups, so much excitement.
This is the clicker. Okay. Hello, everyone. Good to see you all again. Um, I'm Tommy Pauli and I'm the current Chair of the I A B, the Internet Architecture Board. I'll thank Roman for giving a great introduction, talking, uh, about many of the points I'll be covering here. But I'll try to give a perspective, uh, from what the I B is doing. And I want to specifically highlight, uh, some of the ways that we are interacting with ISOC and some of the questions or things we want to bring up to all of you. Overall, the I A B is responsible for, uh, s- some of the aspects of the I T F community that function better with a board of people. So we are working on the liaisons and interactions with other S D Os. Uh, as Roman mentioned, we can, uh, pull in and organize workshops and talk about communities that are not already involved with the I T F. And we handle a lot of the appointments and other, uh, processing and administration that we need. First, I just wanted to highlight some of the, uh, policy and outreach topics. As Roman was mentioning, uh, we've had a great engagement on the WISIS plus twenty process. And this is an area where, um, we've been trying to make sure that the I T F community as a whole is staying aware of this. And, uh, we've been using some of the I A B venues and meetings that we have to help educate the community and make sure that we're able to get the feedback and then provide that into the process. In the past couple of months, uh, the I B has published input to both the Elements paper and the Zero draft. And I think these have been, uh, effective and well-received. And we really want to thank, um, all the engagement of the people that Roman was mentioning earlier, um, in helping review that and helping understand the landscape and, uh, let us shape the contributions, um, into the process from the I T F. Overall, that kind of bubbling up, uh, I, I think I want to highlight that in the past year, we've seen increased energy in the outreach and participation that the I B members have had. A lot of this is thanks to, uh, the collaboration we've had with ISOC, so thank you for that. Some of the recent events, uh, that we've been participating in are I G F, the WISIS plus twenty events, uh, uh, early in the summer. Participating in ICAN meetings, RIPE meetings, and there are many others that we're planning on, uh, continuing to participate in the future. Um, this is an area where, uh, various I A B members are present. They are able to represent the I A B, but also then help, uh, educate and, uh, discuss with communities about the work of the I T F and also how, uh, the I T F and those other communities can collaborate. Um, I, I think we've had very positive input, uh, and reactions from the overall I T F community to this engagement, um, as they are seeing more presence, talking to operators, talking to other, uh, S D Os. And so this is something that we do want to continue doing. I think there's been particular energy in this area because of some of the internet governance topics that have come up. And so we've realized, you know, that we need to be engaged here, but we want that to continue. That shouldn't just be a thing that's happening now. Part of that, as we are reflecting within the I B, is that it is very useful and good to have, uh, these consistent relationships and touchpoints with ISOC staff who's been helping arrange, uh, some of these engagements. One of the things I'll point out is, you know, the I A B is appointed by our NOMCOM process. It can turn over, uh, over the years and, you know, we, we try to have a, uh, some continuity in the character of that. But we have people who will come and go, uh, who may have different abilities to participate. But having a, uh, strong and consistent relationship with, uh, ISOC members who are able to provide that continuity to help provide the history and context, um, in partnership with I A B is, uh, very useful. So, um, I think that is going well, but I just want to highlight that that's something that we have intentionality to continue and would like to continue to engage on.
Thank you for that, Tommy. And I just wanted to say, as I said in the I A B earlier this week, uh, the feedback that we get from I A B participation in these various forums, uh, is extremely positive. Having that voice of this community and, and a, a reflection that this community cares about how the internet evolves, um, around the world and in these kinds of forums is, is noticed and it's, um, having an effect. So I, I hope that the I A B will keep that up. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we can go into the next. This is mainly just highlighting something for awareness. I'm sure, uh, many, if not all of you are aware, but I just want to make sure it is, uh, clearly, uh, stated. Uh, if you look over the past essentially six months, both the I S G as well as the I A B have received a very large number of appeals in our process from two community members primarily. This is something that has happened before. We have had other spates of, uh, high number of appeals. This is something we're dealing with in processing, um, and there's a lot of discussion in the community about it. I just want to highlight this because, uh, within our process as defined in RFC twenty twenty-six, the, the ISOC Board of Trustees is a body that can receive some set of appeals in this chain. It does not receive appeals about particular, uh, topics. The I A B is the final say for, uh, the topics within the community. However, uh, if there are appeals regarding the process itself, um, that essentially the process defined in RFC twenty twenty-six, if that is considered to be a flawed or broken, then that is something that would, uh, potentially be appealed up to this body. No such appeal has been made. I just want to raise that for awareness and such, so that if there are any questions or things that people need to prepare, in that eventuality that we are willing to talk about that, we just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. And we don't need to go into it more now, but just take that into consideration, please. All right, let me go to the next. So getting into, uh, just more of the, what are the day-to-day activities going on in I A B? Wanted to highlight, uh, some of the different things we do. As Roman was mentioning, we can convene workshops. So last year, and I talked about this then, we had workshops on, uh, the operations community as well as the AI preferences and control. This year, we are also having two workshops. We had one previously in October that was a joint workshop with the W three C looking at, uh, age restrictions, um, and the trends that we're seeing there. And frankly, the, you know, many concerns, um, about how these can impact the internet architecture can have, uh, very broad privacy implications, et cetera. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. We are also convening a workshop looking at IP address geolocation. We're going to be looking at in December. This is again, a, I think a very interesting topic of something that is very much part of the reality of how people are using and operating internet, but it's something that is not, uh, reflected in the design and intentionality of the architecture. And, and so this is an area of some degree of friction, um, that is worth highlighting. And it also has a lot of relationship to things like age restrictions and how people are trying to enforce jurisdictions. So it is an area that we think needs a bit more attention. And so these are places where we are trying to engage with communities that are having a big impact on the internet, on the internet, but are not necessarily involved in the discussions in the I T F. And hopefully we can try to find ways to have a dialogue there and figure out what, if anything, can be done within the technical community here at the I T F. Oh, yeah, great. So you actually started answering the question I was going to ask you is, for that community outreach outside the I E T F, how successful do you feel like you've been in getting those other communities involved in these workshops? I think we've been pretty happy with what we've been able to do. When we convene these workshops, that is always one of the first questions of like, can we get the right people in the room? There are some workshops that are a bit more internally focused to the I T F where we just have our own community there. But these ones, the point of them is to have a dialogue between the people who normally come to the I T F and the people who are not there. So for the age restriction workshop, we had maybe not, it was thirty people, so it's not huge swaths, but we had good representation from people who are working in the regulators, from people who are working in the industries, building the tools in response to the regulators and working with the regulators to actually do this enforcement. We had academia, privacy advocates, human rights advocates, we had I T F community. Yes, this is the joint W three C one. Yeah. And we had the W three C community as well. That's right. Very good point. So it was a broad range of people. These people have very different perspectives. We didn't agree on everything. However, it was, I think, very effective in having people to come to a common understanding of what are the moving pieces, what are the concerns, where specifically are the differences and where are the places where people are agreeing more. We still have to see what are the right outcomes and next steps there. And I have another slide where I want to highlight that because I think that is something that is beyond just the I T F, and I think we need broader thought in that, and I'd love your thoughts on that as well. For the I P address geolocation workshop, yeah, we have people who are operating I P geofeeds, and there's a whole industry around that. We have people who are consuming information of different use cases. We have people in the internet community who view this as, why would you ever do this? This is not what I P addresses are meant to do. And we need to have all of those pieces together. All right, moving on. We're also handling various appointments. I think one of the interesting ones to highlight here is we have nominations and selection ongoing for the independent stream editor. And so this is one of the streams of R F Cs that is unique in that it is where more proprietary or essentially non consensus documents are able to be published. And so this is something that we've, the community has discussed over time, and we're going to be getting input from the community on what they want to see going forward for the stream. There are some interesting implications and discussions that have been had previously about let's say cryptography being published on the stream and other, other topics that would not normally go through the I T F, but yet are marked as R F Cs here. We also hold various technical programs, and these are ways to more within the I T F community, be able to have dialogues with experts and try to write documents of things that are more reflective as opposed to driving particular protocol work. We have ongoing discussions around evolvability, deployability, maintainability. That's a program that is continuing. We have another program that has been open for a while on environmental impact that is closing, but closing as a success because we now have both a I R T F research group on sustainability as well as an I T F working group, the Green Working Group, that have essentially come out of the efforts that were started with our environmental impact program. So I think this is a good example of another way that the I B is trying to help start work or shepherd work into the I T F. Right, I think that's it for here. So we can move ahead. Yeah, so here we're trying to highlight some technical trends, and I think this is one of the things that as Roman was alluding to, the I B has a role in trying to see what are the emerging trends, what are the emerging architectures? And we're trying to figure out how those efforts can or should come into the I T F and come into the engineering world and how to engage the communities that we don't already have engagement with. Roman talked already a lot about the various trends in A I, G N tech A I. We have many side meetings, and this is a situation where these side meetings don't have any particular standing, but we do have a number of I B members who are particularly watching these and trying to work with the various proponents to figure out how to successfully bring work in or scope it correctly to be appropriate for what can happen in the I T F. So if people do have questions, we can certainly have engagement from various other I B members who are watching those spaces carefully. Yeah, so this is an example of this kind of pre standardization work. And then also, as I was mentioning for this workshop that we had on age restriction, that is one particular that I do want to highlight because it is a area that can have many concerns. One of the outcomes of this workshop that we held, I think it was just broadly, a lot of us understanding more deeply and viscerally how quickly this is becoming a reality in many regions where they have the where the jurisdictions are enforcing legislation around age restrictions. It is very, very different in all the different places. It is not consistent and it is a source of a lot of potential fragmentation on the internet. Creating very different barriers to access a lot of new types of inequities and potential privacy concerns. And the impact on internet and web access broadly, there can be many fundamental architectural changes that will happen if this becomes even more broad, and it is already happening. And one of the other things that I think was very apparent from this is that inaction by the technical community and a lack of engagement will not make these things not happen, but it will almost certainly lead to worse outcomes as they evolve organically. And it's a tricky area because I think a lot of the the participants with the traditional ethos of the I T F, you know, aren't designing the internet to have these types of barriers in them and don't want to see those barriers exist. But I think we would be unwise to ignore them and not figure out a way that we can have the architecture survive and continue to grow with these regulations and restrictions placed upon them. So this is something that we'll be trying to document in a report from the workshop, but that alone, of course, is not enough. As we discussed in our I B open meeting, this is something that there may be building blocks and pieces of technology that could be used in these solutions to make them less damaging that we can do in the I T F and W three C. But the overall space requires broader coordination. So this is something that, you know, I think we'd appreciate all of your thoughts and engagement on. We'd like to continue working with ISOC on, but broadly, we're going to need to be thinking about where does this overall architectural implication, like how are we thinking about this? And if we're looking for better directions in architectures and solutions, we're going to need a fair amount of cross-area engagement here. Okay. And then lastly, I just, this is actually more out of the meeting we had on Thursday. I just wanted to highlight some of the positive directions and ways in which the I B would love to see continuing engagement with ISOC and some of the goals we have for our engagement there. And this is mainly just reflecting some of the things that I was hearing from other I B members. So I think we'd like to see a continued focus on global participation in the I T F. I think, you know, Caleb, to your point. And this is an area where hopefully we can have more coordination in outreach efforts and discussions with various ISOC chapters around the world and have engagement there from the I B and talk about what are the right ways to improve participation. I think to like the last topic, we want to be more proactive in discussing how we defend the internet architecture. We also want to work on identifying content that the technical community within I T F can help provide and write down and document in ways that would be useful for ISOC to be able to discuss as we're talking about policy goals, et cetera. So that the things and the topics that we can be pointing to are very relevant and timely. And then also, again, in our engagement around outreach to help continue identifying the venues for outreach that are going to be the most effective so that we can focus on those and get the biggest bang for the buck essentially. So yeah, those are some of the goals we have with engagement and happy to have questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tommy, for the discussion. It's very much appreciated, especially the work that the I A B is doing in outreach, and it's great to hear that you're interested in working more, especially with the ISOC chapters in coordination. Our next speaker is Flavio Wagner from the chapter community, and I know he's on on already and listening to your comments. So I'm sure you and Flavio may have a chance to coordinate on that going forward. Thanks again for your time and safe travels.
Thanks so much.
So as I just mentioned, our next speaker is Flavio Bangvin de Flavio. So I believe since he's remote, we'll be switching to a slightly different view so we can have his community chair report.
Yeah. Do you hear me?
Yes, I might ask the local folks if they could turn up the volume just a little bit because we can hear you, but it's a little bit faint. Thanks. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, thank you for having me here. Sorry that I cannot be with you there in person, but I'm not attending the I T F meeting. So I will do it remotely this time. So so this is then our traditional report from the chapter's advisory council. So next slide, please. This is for you just to remember the current composition of our steering committee. So I'm the chair of the steering committee, which is composed of nine members. We have Heba Sayed from Egypt as vice chair and Katarina Givergen from the Armenia chapter secretary and other six members from the different regions of the internet society. So this, our term goes until the end of December. Then on January first, our new steering committee will be in charge of the chapter's advisory council. I will talk a little bit later about the elections that are now running, and very soon we will have the results and then the new composition of the steering committee for next year. So next slide, please. So we had our last quarterly full check call on sixteenth of September. And among many other issues and updates from the staff and different reports, we had these three main agenda points. First one is the revision of the Czech governance documents, both the charter and the rules on procedures. And at this last check call, we had then finalized the composition of a small group that will be in charge of this revision and make a proposal to the Czech. It's composed by Chair Langdonor from Australia, Olivier Crapin Leblon from the U K England chapter, Eduardo Diaz from the Puerto Rico chapter, Mike Nelson from Washington D C, Stern Bong from Cameroon and Pedro Lana from Brazil. So they are now starting their work and we, we hope that in some time, so a few weeks from now, they will have a first proposal, then we start discussing this with the steering committee and then later bring this to the attention of the Czech. This, we hope, will happen during the first check call next year. So the second main issue on the last check call was the discussion, a very lively discussion on chapter's engagement in the Czech. I have already mentioned this to you in a previous report that we have been noticing not so high engagement of the chapters in the issues of the Czech as we would expect. We've been having a low attendance of Czech representatives to the calls and also very few engagement in proposing issues and taking part in our discussions. So we are discussing various ideas on how to improve this, and I will also talk a little bit later on this during this report. And the third main issue in the agenda was the chapter content archive project. We had a presentation by the, by people from New York and Mexico chapters. We are making now a specification of how this project will run, and then I will also in a few slides explain to you which are the main ideas around this project. So next slide, please. We had in this last check call thirty two chapter representatives attending the call out of ninety. We have nowadays a Czech representative appointed. So this means from the hundred twenty two current active chapters, ninety have representative appointed. So this means thirty two do not have representative. And when compared to the attendance in the previous two Czech calls this year, only sixteen chapter representatives had attended the call in February, twenty three in June. So we are seeing a slight increase, but it's still far from what we would expect as a good attendance from most chapters. And we, as always, we had many people from the ISOC and ISOC Foundation staff attending the call. We had Christine, Sebastian, Rama, Chris Locke and Ali, and they made reports or took part in the various discussions during the call. And we are glad that they, we have always this attendance from the staff. So next slide, please. So this is about the chapter content archive project. The idea is to have a distributed repository to preserve all types of chapter generated content under library standards. This will be a chapter led project. The idea is to have redundant storage in multiple locations. This will have some regional distributions. So in all regions, we will have some, some caches with backup power, curation with proper metadata, and the very important thing is tools for chapters to create their own webcasts and live stream to store and distribute through this content archive facility. So the representatives from Mexico and U S New York chapters are working currently with the ISOC Foundation staff to develop a complete specification of the project and then submit a grant application to the ISOC Foundation. They had presented first ideas of this project in the last full check call in September and had some feedback from the representatives that were attending the call. And we'll have a next full check call in ten days from now, and then they will come again to the, to the call and make a new report showing what is happening since then and what are the new improvements, considering the feedback they've received. So it is estimated that the rollout timeline will take from six to twelve months. An initial budget, including costs for design, infrastructure deployment, and for the operations over three years will be prepared and then analyzed and eventually approved by the ISOC Foundation. And the idea is that the Czech will have the supervision of this project. So we are also, we have to 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 start discussing how the governance will look like exactly. But the idea is to have two committees, one, an operational committee led by the US, New York and Mexico chapters, but also having representatives from other regions. And then a more general steering committee for overall advice and supervision of the project, also with representatives from the various regions. And this governance structure will be conceived in in the next few weeks. And we hope this will be brought together with the the full specification of the project to the next call, full check call, not this one in ten days from now, but the first one next year in February for the the consideration and maybe approval from the Czech. And then we we think that the project will will be, if the financing is already also approved by the ISOC Foundation, then the the implementation can start. So sometime in the first quarter of next next year. So next slide, please. So we are now having, as I said before, the the current term of the the steering committee, the nine members of the steering committee will end in December. The the governance structure of the the Czech, the the steering committee is reelected every year. So we have to elect nine members for one year terms. And the idea is always to elect at least one representative from each of the six regions plus the three, three additional representatives. The nominations closed on the beginning of October. We had twenty six candidates, so more than fifty percent from them coming from Africa, which shows how the African chapters are willing to take part in in so in the issues of the the Czech, which is very good. We had four candidates from Latin American Caribbean, three from Europe, two from Middle East, two from the Asia Pacific and one from North America. The campaign ran from October fourteenth to twenty second. The voting has opened on October twenty third and closed two days ago, November sixth. And the results shall be announced on November eleventh. So in three days from now, we will know which are the nine steering committee members elected for next year. So next slide, please. So this is a traditional slide, just for you to know that we have this. The steering committee has monthly calls, but we also are in permanent contact for for the various issues of the Czech for the chapter's advisory council. We have the the steering committee leadership also holds a monthly call. Then we have this quarterly, the four quarterly calls for the full check, next one in November eighteenth. And we also, this is something new that started this year. We are very grateful to Sally for launching this idea, this quarterly calls between the Czech steering committee and the ISOC staff leadership, which is very useful for exchanging ideas and updating on different things. So next slide, please. So this is an update on the situation of the chapters. We now, as I said before, we have now hundred twenty two full chapters compared to the hundred nineteen in July. We have now nine chapters in rejuvenation. These were eleven in July. The the more current, more recent changes, the US Hawaii chapter has been formed as well as the Canada Ontario and the Mongolia chapters. In fact, the these announcements have been made in the the last two days. So the Canada Ontario was announced two days ago and Mongolia chapter was announced yesterday. We are very glad about these new chapters. The Spain Canary Islands chapter went from pre rejuvenation to rejuvenation. And we had two chapters, Namibia and Somalia, come from in rejuvenation to good standing. But we had to to unfortunately, one chapter, the Qatar chapter, went from in rejuvenation to closer because it could not comply with the 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 minimal requirements. So next slide, please. So and now I would love to to share with you some ideas we have collected from the statements of the twenty six different candidates for the Czech steering committee. So during the 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 current election process. So next slide, please. So as 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 part of the of the procedure of the the election, all the candidates were asked to share their campaign statements. And these were shared with the community, both in a candidate's page on the ISOC website, as well as on the chapter delegates list. So all the leaders of all the hundred twenty two chapters have access to these campaign statements. So this would help them inform the the votes of the different Czech representatives. So next slide, please. And then this with a very kind support from Christine and her team, we tried to collect and organize the the many ideas that were shared by the candidates. So next slide, please. And so as if we can get a the main point is that all candidates collectively envision a stronger, more connected and inclusive global chapter ecosystem. And one ecosystem that amplifies local voices, influences the ISOC's global agenda and operates with transparency, accountability and measurable impact. So next one, next slide. And then trying to organize all ideas, we came up with five different main points. So the candidates talked about strengthening chapter collaboration and knowledge sharing. Second, empowering chapters through capacity building, mentorship and leadership development. Third, improving communication, transparency and accountability between the Czech, the chapters and the the ISOC global. Fourth, amplifying regional and grassroots voices in global internet policy and governance. And finally, building sustainable, impact driven and inclusive chapter operations. And then in the next slides, we will see a few ideas about each of those five main points. So next slide, please. The next, yeah. Yeah. So first point, first topic is about strengthening chapter collaboration and large knowledge sharing. And the main idea is that candidates want to create structured mechanisms for cross chapter cooperation. And according to to them, this can happen, for instance, through co-hosted events with shared agendas, regional and cross-regional working groups and collaboration networks. And third, a digital hub for exchange of knowledge, opportunities, innovation and leadership best practices. So next slide, please. Next. So the second topic is about empowering chapters. And the main idea we get from the candidates is to invest in leadership training, youth engagement and mentorship pipelines to strengthen chapters operational maturity and sustainability. And according to the candidates, this can happen, for instance, through mentorship, leadership training with focus on youth and emerging and underrepresented leaders, a resource library of ready to use toolkits and templates, and finally targeted capacity building and skill transfer at both technical and advocacy levels. So the next slide, please, and and also the next one, yeah. This the third point is about improving communication transparency and accountability. And the main idea here is candidates would love to see established a clear, transparent and two-way communication and reporting system so chapters can track Czech chapter and overall ISOC progress, understand decisions and contribute to priorities. And examples of how this could be achieved is first accessible and simplified communication, issues like language, translation, technical accessibility. Second idea is regular progress reports or dashboards based on transparent and data-driven metrics cooperated with the chapters. And finally, a structured dialogue between the chapters and the ISOC leadership. So next. And next, please. This the fourth topic is about amplifying regional and grassroots voices. And the main idea from the candidates is to ensure that ISOC's global strategy reflects the local priorities by channeling regional and grassroots perspectives into policymaking and advocacy. And examples of how this can be achieved, according to the candidates, is a policy consultation frameworks, for instance, formal mechanisms for bottom policy input. A second idea is to have regular regional policy dialogues with a focus on digital inclusion and safe internet access in underserved areas. And the final idea is about inclusion of Global South and Youth Voices in ISOC Strategy and ISOC's global agenda. And then next slide and the next one is the fifth and final topic brought by the candidates is about building chapter sustainability and operational material. The main idea from the candidates is to focus on making chapters more sustainable, data-driven, impactful with measurable results and inclusive participation. And examples of how this can be achieved include simplified and more predictable grant and funding models, for instance, issues like annual calendar and criteria. Second idea is about impact metrics for chapter performance, for instance, sustainability frameworks and capacity audits. And finally, tailored support, mentorship and training of chapters to ensure they become active and sustainable. Of course, you see a lot of nice ideas there, but of course, not all of them are within the the possibilities of the Czech. Of course, many of those things are more for the ISOC leadership to to take into account and see how this can be implemented or what what of those ideas fit well with the the ISOC strategies. But of course, the Czech would love to discuss these ideas with the staff, with the leadership, to see how can the Czech be helpful in helping achieve all those nice ideas from the chapters. And there are may maybe some issues where the Czech itself can have a more active participation, just taking this last slide there as as an example. One of the ideas there you see is about impact metrics for chapter performance. We have the the annual performance evaluation of all chapters with a lot of different indicators there. But most or some of the the metrics that are currently used are more quantitative ones. They do not really correspond or do not show the quality and impact of the work that is made by the chapters. So could we maybe think of a different set of indicators, of KPIs or that really measure the the impact of the 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 work that is done by the chapters? So this is an idea we started discussing with Christine and her team. And maybe we can evolve there and have a proposal made together with Czech and the staff. So this is the the report. I'm sorry for taking too long. And now I'm open for any comments or your thoughts or feedback on on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Flavio. An excellent and very comprehensive report. I I have Sally and Charles in queue.
Yes, thank you, Flavio. It's great to see you online. Hopefully, we'll see you in person again soon. First of all, I want to thank you for this report. It's excellent. And really, I'm happy to see the level of engagement by the chapters in the the Czech election process. It was it was exciting to see the ideas coming through that list of what different members of our chapter community wanted to accomplish. So I think that shows a level of energy that, as you said, the Czech and Internet Society leadership and staff need to try to capture together. So just first to say that we definitely want to work with you on these ideas that have come through that Czech election process. Lot of really good things in there that I think we can build from. So we're committed to that. Also want to thank you for your leadership in the archive project and and helping to move that along within the Czech. I'm really happy to see the progress there. And then finally, with respect to the governance committee of the Czech that's looking at the different governance mechanisms within the Czech. If there's anything we can do as staff to support that work and and be an appropriate partner for you, please don't hesitate to reach out. We are happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for your words, Sally, and for your offer. Let's regarding the governance documents of the the Czech, let's wait a little bit for this small group to start their work and see what are their first steps and how could maybe ISOC leadership help getting the results implemented and or improve it? Yeah, we would love to to discuss the the ideas before the Czech, really make a final approval regarding a new version of the charter and of the the document with the rules and procedures. So we will surely discuss this with you to see your ideas about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Flavio. Charles?
Yes, Fabio, nice to see you again after seeing you maybe a couple of weeks ago. And it's great to hear your report, very comprehensive, and you you guys certainly have done a lot of work. And it's particularly a delight, I think, to see the rejuvenation and the new chapters and so on. And good to see that you are working with staff, the chapter liaison team and so on on this very closely. Now, I do see that the steering committee has been working very hard. You know, you have monthly meeting and quarterly meetings with the whole Czech and so on. And I'm I'm very interested in the list of what you want to do, the particular slides that you are describing about those things that you, the chat, the the steering committee or the Czech wants to do. Now, they, I I see that many of them are quite high level and big task. It's going to take some time to achieve these goals. So one question I have is that I I I sometimes worry whether you have the structure within the Czech or the steering committee to achieve those tasks. Because particularly of the fact that the term of the steering committee is only one year. And every time, you know, maybe you you have a couple of meetings to discuss what to do or get to know the new members, you're already halfway through the cycle. So I I I always wonder whether this is one thing that needs to be reformed. You know, maybe like two-year stacker terms and so on, so that we can balance between the continuity, but at the same time getting new new people to come in, to to join and work together and so on. So but but on the other hand, I I I think we don't want to impose this on the Czech. So I sometimes have the feeling that maybe it's best if you you you, I don't know whether you have discussed this better within the steering committee or the whole Czech, whether or not some some form of some some kind of reform you think may be necessary or you think that this is okay. And and because I think the board here wants to do whatever we can to help the Czech function the best you can. And we and in whatever ways we can assist the Czech to do its work. So just a question about this, or in the meantime, you know, while we are still under this particular system, how you can ensure the continuity? Let's say after this upcoming election, where maybe a lot of the Czech member, steering committee members will be new again. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Charles. Yeah. I I I share with you this concern regarding the term of the steering committee. For instance, from the nine current steering committee members, only four of them were candidates for reelection. So let's see the result, but at least five new members will come to the steering committee. Yeah, because only four of them are running for reelection. So but I I I share this concern, yeah. Maybe during this discussion of our governance documents, maybe we can discuss also the terms of the of of the steering committee. Maybe have some form of partial renewal every year, but still keeping the the regional distribution of the members. So we we have to to think of how to come with maybe a a new idea regarding the terms. Because I I entirely agree, it's Because I entirely agree, it's one year is with all of those good good ideas, as you said, many things that are very high level, very abstract wishes from the chapters. How can we bring this down to earth and have concrete things? This takes time. Of course, this means working very closely with staff, with I S O C leadership, to see how we can transform those nice ideas into very concrete improvements that help the chapters have more impact in the work they do. And so and for sure, this takes time. So this means we have many good things to discuss with the staff and the leadership in the next coming months and see if the next steering committee is is able to to help, working with the staff, to to start implementing some of those ideas. Yeah, we have work to do.
Thank you, Flavio, and thank you again for the report. We're very happy with it, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and the check as it's reconstituted. Our next report is from Harold, who is representing the O M A C. Harold?
Tune on. Here we go. Good morning from Germany. My name is Harold Zuma, and I think it's the first time that I'm participating in your meeting. Unfortunately, I'm not able to be in Canada, so I'm coming directly from Germany via the internet. I would like to give you a short overview of the activities that we as the O M A C have produced over the last three months. So I have prepared three slides and we have on the agenda, the nomination election committee, where we had to look for volunteers and to get them confirmed. We had two successful O M A C roundtables. And I think these roundtables were showed a strong engagement from from the members and were highly positive rated. And of course, there's a ongoing collaboration with the Internet Society leadership and it just is fun, to be honest. So we see a strong engagement from the leadership, and this is reflected also in our work. Our work means it's me and David Belton who are running the activities. Next, please. So we were asked to identify volunteers for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six committees. And we issued a call for participation, which includes charters, requirements and the time commitments. And we were successful in finding David McCauley from Marysign for the election committee and Lars Eggers from Mozilla for the nomination committee. And I would like to thank both of the volunteers for their time and expertise in the coming work. Next, please. We held, as I said, two roundtables. The first was on August twenty-five about the I T U World Telecommunication Development Conference that is to be held in Baku, I think, next week. The the focus of this roundtable was to give the background papers and strategic objectives from the Internet Society for the V T E D C twenty-five, and we were asking for input and advocacy and engagement plans. The the roundtable was well accepted, so we had ten members plus one board member, and the show was rated excellent or very good by a hundred percent. There was a follow-up call planned on the third of November, which had has been executed and also went very well. Unfortunately, not with that many participants, but it was a vivid discussion, and I think the outcome will be included in the work that the people in Baku will present. Next, please. The Roundtable Twenty-nine was about the Visis Plus Twenty review process. Here, the overview of the Zero Draft and Internet Society proprietaries priorities were presented in a in a matrix. And we started an exchange on multi-stakeholder approach and aligned with the I S O C position. Here again, we had nine O M A C members participating, plus three board members, and it was rated excellent or very good by ninety percent. Next. And final, thank you very much. That was my report, and I hope it was not too long.
Thank you very much for the for the report. We we also had the written report presented earlier. Much appreciated for both of them. Barry, I think you were the.
Yeah, this is this is Barry Leva. Harold, I've said this before, thanks for the O M A C roundtables. I really like them. I try to attend all of them that I can. Unfortunately, the November third one was during I E T F week, so we that's why you didn't get very many. But but yes, please keep them up. They're they're always quite excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Barry. I've I've attended a couple of them myself, and they've been very valuable. And it's great to see the ongoing interaction between the O M A C and the staff working toward increasing activity in the O M A C and the interest in the O M A C among organizational members.
Yeah. So I hope I'm not standing anymore between you and lunch.
No, we we have lunch a good bit away. It's only ten thirty-eight here, but enjoy your afternoon and thank you again for your time.
You're welcome.
The next person we have is Brent. Arnold, Brent, you want to come and join us up here from the Canada chapter?
Thanks very much. It's great to be here with you. I've pegged the meters there. Presented virtually before, and as luck would have it, I was in town. And by Canadian standards, that means in an adjacent province. So happy happy to pop by. So I'm the new chair of the Canadian Internet Society. I'm going to take you through a bit of an update here, and I'd like to cognizant of the fact that I will be the one between you and lunch. I'd like to open up a little time for questions if anyone does have any questions. I'm going to open with a question. How do I make the slide change? All right, we'll do it the oldie timey way. Next slide, please. So here's where I'd like to go. It's going to be a whirlwind tour. We'll start a bit with an overview. I'll take you through some of the things we've been doing the over the last year. It's been a very busy year, and I'm happy to hit the highlights. So next slide, please. So and I should also say I lost my glasses at some time, somewhere between here and Toronto, so I could barely read that screen at a distance. We'll see how it goes. So here's our overview and mission. That hasn't changed. We were established back in twenty thirteen. Oh, thank you. Back in twenty thirteen, and the things we were focusing on back then, this slide doesn't say this, were things like broadband and, you know, connectivity and trying to work on questions of and also broadcasting. It's amazing how much the board has changed since then, by which I mean the game board and the issues we're worried about now, very different and very broad. Next slide, please. Here, so we started with a strategic plan that's ongoing, and here are the key priorities. We're working on building up capacity and expertise. We wanted to move towards a proactive digital policy leadership posture. What had happened throughout the Trudeau government, for those that weren't keeping a close eye on Trudeau before he was dating Katy Perry, we went through a period of a number of years where digital policy was not necessarily a priority, but in keeping with the way that government did things, we would suddenly wake up and find that the bill was being passed through Parliament, that there had been no consultation on. It was an important issue, but they'd spoken to no one. And then they were, everyone was invited to comment within a few days or weeks. So we went through a period where of a few years where we were constantly trying to deal reactively with things the government was putting forward. We wanted, knowing an election was coming at some point, possibly an election that could have been an email, that we really wanted to sort of help set the stage for what we thought government ought to be looking at and what good digital policy looks like in in a changing world, rather than just responding to legislation that was already baked or half-baked. So we've been working towards that and also our sort of traditional priorities of public awareness and education and national engagement and so forth. Next, please. The innovation that we have come up with that has been the biggest part of what we've been doing over the last year, and this is going to be something we keep doing on a rolling basis, is policy roundtables. So we identified a number of priorities that we thought if we can solve these five or six things in a year, that's not bad. And among those are the problem of digital sovereignty, which has now become an important national discussion as our neighbor to the south has become, well, interesting to deal with. So digital sovereignty is now very much a part of the national conversation, so we are putting forward our thoughts on that. We're we're working on a a report on artificial intelligence and what good A I policy would look like. I'm happy to report that, again, meet the new boss, same as the old boss, the government announced a thirty-day sprint towards a new A I policy. As luck would have it, we had just finished our consultation, so we were able to turn around a white paper in time to submit it as part of that process. But for that, we would not have been able to respond that quickly, which is part of the ongoing challenge we're facing in Canada when it comes to dealing with government on these things. We also dealt with, as you'll see, there cybersecurity, privacy, reform of our our broadcasting regulator, the future of our national broadcast broadcaster, the C B C, which is very involved in the digital sphere as well, protection of minors, telecom policy and competition, which competition policy, which in Canada has a digital component as it now does in many other jurisdictions. So we haven't quite solved all these problems yet. Give us a couple more months. Next, please. So backing up a bit, I do want to flag that we've had a leadership transition and that Tim Dent and some of you will have have worked with over the years. He's a force of nature. I miss him terribly. He was chair basically since the beginning and knew how to run a short meeting like nobody I've ever met. I'm trying to learn from him on that. But we had to say goodbye to him because he wanted finally to enjoy his retirement in the in in earnest. So I stepped into his role, but I'm certainly not able to fill his shoes. We also, and this is part of our priorities, have expanded our our board with a view to increasing our ability to respond quickly and proactively to issues as they arise or as we, you know, project them. Next slide, please. And to that end, over the last year and a half, I would say, we've added a number of really impressive people to that to that bench. We have David Fraser, who you may not know if you're not a lawyer, but he's a privacy lawyer at one of our bigger firms, who also has a YouTube channel that is basically where everyone, including privacy lawyers like me, go to find out what is going on and how did this happen. It's an excellent YouTube channel. So if you ever want to understand privacy law and don't want to pay someone like me a lot of money to explain it to you, check out his YouTube channel. It's excellent. We also had Dr. Michael Geist, who is perhaps the biggest academic figure in in Canada when it comes to digital policy. So he we were delighted that he was able to make time to join us. He hosts the Law Bites podcast. And again, if you want to understand Canadian digital policy, everything from cyber to A I to and and and, check out his his podcast. It's excellent. And also, obviously, he publishes. We have Dr. Emily Laidlaw from University of Calgary, who's also doing a fellowship now at U of O. She is a an expert in, among other things, cybersecurity, and she's been a really great get for us, prolific and and scholar in that area and a very good explainer of things. We've also drawing on the on on the private sector got Jason Key, who deals with policy for Netflix and has been with Google in the past. Anyway, we have Jeffrey Phillips from facturation.net, but who has a deep sort of background in digital policy on the private sector side as well. So this has sort of really improved our ability to run roundtables and and get our thought leadership out, you know, in a much more quickly than we could have in the past. Next, please. We're continuing some initiatives we started recently. We've got launched a newsletter that as we continue our engagement online, we're hoping to to see sort of draw more people in and see what we're up to. But if you haven't subscribed, please do. You'll get to see exactly what we've been up to. Next, please. We launched, and I know this looks like I just wanted to put a picture of me on it, but I didn't, you know, design the slide for what is if it helps, I don't look like that anymore, as those in the room that will know. I would look at the bright-eyed, hopeful person in that picture. We launched a podcast that we called Net Positive, and we did that. It's to start with a generous grant from Toronto Metropolitan University, and we opened with a series, unlimited series on A I upscaling in Canada. We're moving towards a new season that's going to be addressing a lot of these legislative priorities that we're speaking to and also focusing, continuing to focus heavily on the A I issue and on data sovereignty. I'm happy to report that I'm the the host of this podcast because I own the best microphone of anyone on the board. Next, please. We are in a good position, thanks to that board bench strength that we've managed to bring in in the last year and a half to get a lot of attention in the media that we wouldn't have had in the past. So we've been on the national, Canada's National Evening News numerous times. We've been in our papers of record over the last year. Those of us that are lawyers have been able to sort of leverage connections with our National Bar Association and its publications. So we're able to sort of in the last year and a half, we've been able to raise the organization's profile to the point now where media looking for comment on things are coming to us, which was where we wanted to be because it's, as you know, the easiest way to participate in a national conversation. Next, please. We're pursuing a number of events, some new, some are sort of tent pegs in what we are tent poles, not pegs, in what we've been doing over the years. Digital Access Day is usually our flagship event, so we were happy to do that again this year at Carleton University, and we focused on the issue of bridging the digital divide, had a number of great speakers. I'd love to be able to say the tone of the meeting was optimistic, but that's not the way twenty twenty-five has been shaking out. So it was, if nothing else, fascinating. Next, please. We held a policy forum dealing specifically with the overall sort of question of digital policy and legislation. We got some excellent engagement at that as well. Next, please. One of our annual events that we're always we're very proud of is our Women in Leadership Event, and it brings together just some somebody powerhouse women in the in the areas of digital policy and and also sort of in business in digital. Not a lot of that happening in Ottawa, frankly. I've been bringing together women in particular in this, so that's something that we always look forward to, and it's always a great event, to which I am not invited, but I get to see the pictures. Next, please. We held our A I Infrastructure and Governance Event just last month, and that again was an opportunity to bring together in the same room policymakers, professionals in the area, academics and so forth. This is one of the advantages of being housed in Ottawa. It's easy to sort of be at the crux of those national conversations if people can just walk over and talk to you. Next, please. And we continued our tradition of advocacy in the form of giving direct input to government through testifying and hearings. So we participated among participated, among other things, in our in the recent hearings to do with Canadian content and the creation of domestic programming. So that's another thing that we look forward to doing. As it happens, a number of the people who have joined our board would have been witnesses in these kinds of hearings anyway, so we're delighted to be able to leverage their expertise under our banner. Next, please. Where are we going from here? We're going to keep building on the things that we've implemented over the last year and a half. As I said, those roundtables are now going to be stable. They're also a lot of fun. So, you know, if you if you if you want to get involved in these, please do feel free to reach out to me or our executive director, because, you know, the more the more people around the table are better to discussion and is we we want to sort of get get as as good and as broad a consultation as we can when we are putting together our positions on things. We're going to keep trying to proactively advocate across a range of policy issues. Candidly, we're still dealing with a bit of a pinball situation where governments are saying, because the the Carney government is very aware of the issues that we and others are talking about, so we're starting to already see a lot of announcements in these areas. So we may still be playing catch-up for a little while. But if you're doing that because the government is trying to accomplish something, that's a nice problem to have. And we're going to keep building our outreach and profile building so that people are aware sort of of the good the work work we're doing and the good work that I S O C in general is doing. Next, please. I don't I didn't look at my watch, so I may have already abused my time. If I haven't, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments or suggestions. I don't, I didn't look at my watch, so I may have already abused my time. If I haven't, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments or suggestions that anyone may have.
Caleb.
Yeah, obviously, you know, I would have questions for you, right?
I knew, I knew you would. Can I say one thing before you get it? Because I know this is going to be interesting and I will forget the thing I was going to say because I forgot to put a slide on this. We've enjoyed generous support over the last year and a half from, from ISOC Global in the form of grant funding that has made the work that we do possible, particularly those in-person events, which as you know, as we sit in this beautiful hotel space, only become more expensive every year. So thanks very much for making that easy and giving us the funds because we're still very much on a shoestring to help us sort of move those things forward. Thank you. All right, Caleb, what have you got for me?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for all the hard work you guys are doing. I follow all your work and so the first thing I wanted to mention is, oh, by the way, before I forget, Brent will also be speaking at the Canadian Internet Governance Forum, representing ISOC Canada. So if anyone wants to participate remotely online, please join. It's on the CIGF Anson Committee. And it's good to have Brent speak. Thank you for the plug. I forgot that. Yeah, you should have put it there. Right. That being said, so I noticed something that the Canadian Internet Society is focused more on policy, government lobbying and the rest of them. And then we have other three chapters within Canada as well, the Quebec, the Manitoba, the New Ontario, which I think the New Ontario will probably be focusing more because you have a lot of tech folks there. We're just
That there is a lot of, yeah, the, a lot of the, the critical bases in Waterloo, Ontario, Toronto, Ontario, particularly around artificial intelligence. So I think that is part of it. Also, Ontario as a province is moving, is starting to now aggressively legislate in this space as well. So there's lots of work to be done at that Ontario level.
Yeah. So my point is, as you all know, Canada has different way of legislating issues, right? Quebec is almost the second Canada inside Canada. They legislate their own issues separately. And then the federal government, which you guys lobby as well. So my question to you is, how are you thinking of starting to collaborate with all the other chapters? The other three chapters I mentioned, Quebec, Manitoba, my own chapter, the New Ontario, to start seeing that you guys are not walking this way, walking that way, where you can have collective voices of things happening in different provinces, because in Manitoba, there are different legislations. We are also tracking as well. That is different. And all of these things all fit into the way Canada is kind of structured, that every province makes their own laws. And sometimes they just key into the federal one. So how are you guys going to start collaborating? Not just being in silos, you're working with the Ottawa guys, Manitoba folks, Quebec guys working separately.
It's a great question. And candidly, the constitutional division of powers that sort of looms over everything to do with law and policy in Canada has sort of ingrained itself on the way that that work is being done in Canada. We are very focused on in federal mostly because that's an area where we have the connections and the geography and so forth. We're getting our favor to focus. But let me, and I would say candidly, we haven't done as good a job as we could working with those other organizations. And I think that there's a great opportunity because yours has started to make real strides in the last few years in building capacity as well. We have a new Ontario chapter to work with. So let me say, I'm taking this opportunity and thank you for the opportunity to hang out the, to put out the welcome mat. We would very much like to do more of that and to do it better. So please do feel free to reach out to us. Feel free to reach out to me. I'm very findable on social media, among other things, and you'll, you'll hear a lot about what we're doing, but I'm, I welcome those discussions and I think it's something we need to do better in Canada.
Charles. Yeah, Caleb took my first question, so I'll jump to my second, which is, actually, I think a lot of the work that you're doing. Well, first of all, let me also say that I think Canada is a good example that maybe some other countries, not all, not many, can reference in terms of chapters operation in that you have a national chapter. And then you have the regional chapters also functioning, you know, alongside each other or together. So I think that that's something that I think maybe some of the other bigger or, you know, nations or chapters can, can reference. But the other thing that I see is that you have done a lot of work and you have a lot of expertise in terms of dealing with many of these issues. You know, one slide, you know, showing all these issues, privacy, you know, AI, whatever. Now, I'm wondering whether there's room for Canada or your chapter to, to, to share this expertise with other chapters that might be facing similar issues. They may have different local contacts, but many of these issues are quite similar. And if you're holding these, let's say I saw those webinars and so on, on these topics, AI infrastructure, whatever. I'm just wondering that there might be a good and interesting audience out there outside of Canada that would be interested in finding out what you're doing and to learn from your experience and the policy leadership, either in your government or within your community.
Thank you for the question. And in the finest Canadian tradition, we're not good at bragging or tooting our own horn or self promoting outside of our own little backyard. So I think you're absolutely right. And especially given the quality of people we have around the table now, I think it would be a shame not to. So again, I'm a little at sea in terms of how I would start that process, but those of you that are more in the know in this organization, please do feel free to reach out. We're already doing the work. We would love to talk more about it with others. We're very interested in international perspectives as well as perspectives throughout Canada, because these are mostly global problems. We're legislating at the level we're legislating because that's the constitution we have, but we're working in a global economy, a global society, really. So we really should be trying to sort of all pull together. So I think it's a great idea. And if anyone would like to sort of follow up on that as an action item, I'd love to hear from you.
Hello. Well, I think I'm in the queue and I'm probably the person who might help you follow up on that. First, I just want to congratulate you on that report. Excellent. And, and I have maybe on behalf of Natalie Campbell and, and the other policy team, just want to congratulate the Canadian chapter and other chapters in Canada who've been working really hard on this policy advocacy. It is, as you said, a really complex environment. It's happening fast. And I think an area for 26 is, you know, what's happening in Canada, we're seeing in other markets and finding ways for chapters and org members to come together and maybe it's policy roundtables or something where we can compare trend lines together, also tactics that have been successful, the coalitions that are needed to advance the agenda. I think there's something there that's definitely, I'd love to collaborate with you on that.
Let's, let's, let's continue that conversation. It's funny, you mentioned trends. I just came from the Canadian Bar Association's Privacy Conference. We had a session there where two experts took in 40 minutes, did a round the world tour of what's happening in privacy and cyber. Apart from the Arctic and Antarctic, because the penguins and bears don't get a vote. But it was interesting to sort of see, because we rarely look at it in those terms, just how similar the problems and the solutions and the trends are globally. So yeah, I think that we, there's an opportunity to be, become less myopic on our part. Yeah. So short answer, love to. Yes, please.
Seeing no other questions, let me add my thanks for your coming here today. I realized that an adjacent province seems like a small beer to you, but from our perspective, we really appreciate your taking that time.
And they have provinces the size of Europe. It's a different, yeah.
I think I crossed Germany on the way here possibly, yes.
Well, we also appreciate the effort you're downplaying in traditional Canadian ways, the effort you put into bringing together these policy communities. I know you said they just walk over, possibly skate certain times of year, but it takes a lot of effort to encourage people to, to come to you for, for these policy discussions. And we appreciate both your doing that on behalf of the chapter and on behalf of the society as a whole. So thanks very much. And unfortunately, our colleague from Quebec was not able to join us at the last moment. So we will not be hearing from that chapter. They may send us something as a written submission, as Glenn did for the IETF Trust. So we will take a short break now and return at 20 after. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everybody, and welcome back. For those of you who were just joining us, the next item of business on the agenda is the President and CEO's report. Obviously, that was submitted to the board as part of the packet, but we will be displaying it on the, on the screen as well for the benefit of those who did not get the packet and who are watching online. So sadly, if you would take it away.
Thank you, Ted. As Ted said, I submitted a President and CEO report as part of the packet for this meeting. I will take that as read. We will have it on the screen and we'll also publish this as part of our materials following the board report so that the community can also read it. So I took this opportunity with the CEO report to reflect a bit on my first year as CEO of the Internet Society. And it has been quite a ride. It's been a, a busy year, a challenging year, but a year in which the Internet Society, both the staff and the community that we work with have really risen to the challenges and really are meeting the moment that we're in. The Internet Society is really, the, the unique feature of the Internet Society is our global community and that community is diverse. It is comprised, of course, of our organizational members, our chapter members, our colleagues in the IETF. But increasingly as well, it includes our grantee community and includes partners and donors that are working with the Internet Society in support of a common vision and a mission that is as important as it's ever been. So I want to, to start by saying that despite the challenges that this year has presented, we have a changing global environment around us. The global donor environment is changing and significant geopolitical risks that are emerging. We at the Internet Society, in my view, is that the Internet Society is strong. And the Internet Society is prepared to meet this moment. And I could not be more grateful to the staff, to the community and to the board for your support in, in driving us forward, in supporting the work that we're doing, providing the strategic direction that we need. And, and, and really, it's been a remarkable year to work with all of you. Following my reports, Yogesh and Chris will provide more detailed reports on the activities of the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation. But the purpose of the CEO report is to provide a higher level view of what I see happening across the two organizations. So what I thought we would do is start with a video from our colleagues in the Internet Society Hawaii chapter. Because as I was thinking back on the year, I began the year at the Pacific Telecommunications Community in PTC in Honolulu, Hawaii, where I met this man here, Bert. And it was a really great opportunity to, to meet Bert and the, the chapter that was not yet in formation and to also interact with the community network for the nation of Hawaii that the Internet Society had been supporting for some time. So I will turn it over to Bert for a moment.
Hello, hi, everybody. Bert Lum coming to you from Honolulu, Hawaii. And I'm proud to announce that we are officially the Internet Society Hawaii chapter. And it's been a bit of a journey. We started this back in 2019, when we helped out with the Indigenous Connectivity Summit over in Waianaealo. And we finally have gotten through the application process and are now official. You know, we continue to work with the folks over at Puho Nuo Waianaealo, as well as the Nation of Hawaii. And, you know, that community has really grown, I think significantly. They've got a Ma Keke, which is a market. They leverage the internet to do e-commerce. And they have Aloha Aina Day, which is really around nation building. And so I think that's a testament to being a part of something that has really taken advantage of the internet and really grown. You know, in 2026, we're going to be doing something with an event in September called Honolulu Tech Week. And we'll do an information briefing on the Internet Society, IGF and ICANN. So that's coming up in September 26. So I want to mahalo the ISOC board and all the folks at the Internet Society that have helped to help us get established, you know, as the Hawaii chapter. So until we see you, stay safe and we'll see you at an Internet Society event near you. Aloha.
Thanks to Bert for being willing to do that video. I think that that there reflects the journey that we are on. This is a community that, the Waianaealo community that had really no connectivity and was isolated on, on the main island of Hawaii and has been working with the Internet Society and the indigenous communities to, to establish connectivity and to build a society around that connectivity in the nation of Hawaii. And it's a real honor to, to support them. And it was a true honor to, to go visit that, that community and see what they are accomplishing. And then to see that move forward into an Internet Society chapter that can sustain that community and, and engage and drive engagement between that community and the broader global Internet Society community. Last year, when I outlined my vision for my time as CEO, I identified three key themes. I think we can scroll up if that's all right to the next page. The first was engaging and recognizing the community in all that we do. The second was connecting the Internet Society's work to its impact on people. And third, defending and advocating for a globally connected internet. And I challenged both myself and the entire team to bring community into the center of everything the Internet Society does. How we advocate, how we implement our projects, how we present ourselves to the world. And to the staff's enormous credit, they went with me on this journey and they embraced that challenge. And early feedback from many of you and out in the communities, we see that this is making a difference. And it is not just a difference where we feel better about our work, although we do. But it's a difference in the impact that we can have around the world. What we in the leadership team see very clearly is that the, the global community of the Internet Society, as I described it, this highly diverse global community is unique. This is our differentiator as an organization. It enables us to drive impact through the standards work that you see at the IETF, through the policy and advocacy work that we do at the global level and at really truly local level where the work is impacting people's lives. And that is turns around to create opportunities for us to scale our work through outreach to donors and through the ability to bring in more resources to the Internet Society. So I'm really proud that, that we have done that. We're not done. There's still work to do. I think as we saw in Flavio's report, there are more opportunities to bring the community together. And as we heard from our Canada chapter, to drive that kind of cross-regional, cross-chapter collaboration, even with our org members and also with the technical community. Many of the issues that you heard from the IAB and the IETF around policy issues like age verification and things like that are things where our chapters and our org members are also heavily engaged. So there's a real opportunity, I think, to bring the global community together on issues of common cause. And I think the work that we've done this year will enable us to do that more effectively in the years ahead. One thing I'm particularly proud of that we did this year was an effort called our Online Trust and Safety Initiative, which came forward out of the board's 2030 strategy. One of the things that are strategic objectives is that people everywhere have an internet experience that's safe, secure and protects them online. That issue of online safety, the individual safety that, that we all depend upon and need to, to function online and have confidence in our online transactions, that user level safety work was not necessarily something the Internet Society had tackled before. That was new to us. But one of the things that we observed was that many of our chapters were already engaged in that work. As we look at the grant applications As we look at the grant applications coming into the Internet Society for Beyond the Net Grants and otherwise, we saw a tremendous number of grant applications to do online safety training in their local communities. And they had different target audiences. I think ISOC Mexico was working on training elderly people on how to work safely and avoid scams online. ISOC Cameroon was very engaged in training women and girls on how to operate safely online. And you could repeat that story across the Internet Society chapter community. So as we were thinking about what would ISOC Global do on online safety, I challenged the team to start with the community that's already doing this work. Why are they doing it? What's the demand that they're they're seeing? What are they responding to? What challenges do they face as they offer this kind of training? What could we learn from them? What gaps do they see? What resource do they wish they had access to that would make that work more impactful? And so we challenged ourselves this year to really undertake a co-creation approach to this program. And we have never done that before. So you might see in the budget, it was a relatively low-budget activity initially because we didn't know what we didn't know. And we wanted to start by consulting and really working with the community to co-create that. And we know that this is a huge, that the issue of online safety and scams and all this other work is a huge impediment to people coming online. And it's also, as we connect the hardest-to-reach people in the world, we need to do more as the Internet Society to ensure that they have the resources and information to come online safely. And so we felt like that was a real imperative for us. Over the last several months, our our team at the Internet Society has been working directly with community members. We also have a special interest group on online safety that we have been collaborating with really closely to ensure that their voices shape every aspect of our work. And what you will see in the 26 Action Plan is, we hope, responsive to what we heard from the community. It's not so much that the Internet Society needs to create all the materials ourselves, but what they would like is for us to draw in the resources, vet them to some degree, and then present them out in the world in a way that they can draw them down and use them effectively in their in their communities. We have been running some workshops over the last several weeks, pilot training workshops in El Salvador, Brazil, and Rwanda to get detailed feedback on the training content that will then go shape the next iteration of that work. And this is, I I think, Ben, just a really delightful thing to watch as the the team has been building this. And like I said, you will see it in the 26 Action Plan. And interestingly, it's responding to a demand that we are seeing out in the globe among donors as well, who really want to drive online safety out in the world. And so we are positioning ourselves on the basis of this community consultation from the bottom up into a program that will, I think, position the Internet Society extremely well in the years ahead. Over the year, we've seen very high levels of engagement from our community, reflecting not only their commitment to the mission of the Internet Society, but the way in which I think the 2030 Strategy is something that they can understand, they can grasp, and they can start shaping work plans around. So again, really want to emphasize how important that strategy has been. This year, we've seen 107 chapters participate in our activities, 29 organizational members, and 100% of our special interest groups are engaging in different ways in our strategy. And also, we are able to get higher degrees of funding. Maybe we can scroll up a little bit to the bottom of this page. Higher degrees of funding out into our community. This year in 2025, we've granted over $1.9 million to 94 chapters. This is 2025 alone. This is, I think, reflective of our commitment to supporting local action and impact. We really do believe that the this chapter community has the capacity to do really important and impactful work. And we want to support them on their journey to becoming effective grantees and be able to scale their work into larger projects over time. This Beyond the Net program has grown from $280,000 granted in 2021 to nearly $1 million in 2025. So that's something that reflects, again, the demand from the chapters and also the capacity of the chapters increasingly to execute on really high-quality work. The community outreach activities also extend across the Internet technical community. That was something that was really important to me. I've one of the the highlights of my career, I think, at the Internet Society has been the engagement with the IETF community, with our colleagues in ICANN and others across the Internet technical community. And so I was really committed and excited to to tackle that this year and ensure that our relationships are strong across the Internet technical community. I think we still have work to do here, but we have ongoing dialogue. I have ongoing dialogue with the CEOs of the various Internet organizations. And their staffs are working together on things like WISsis Plus 20, working collaboratively to support AFRENC. And as as Tommy and Roman said, supporting the the IETF community and how they engage in policy discussions around the world. We can keep scrolling. And if anybody has questions or comments and you would like to intervene in between, please don't don't hesitate. A key thing for us that that we wanted to do, and this is again responsive to our 2030 Strategy, the strategy emphasizes people. People everywhere will. And so it was important to us that we ensure that we can connect our work to the impact on people's lives. And that doesn't discount the the importance of the technical work and some of the issues that we tackle are really complex. But we need to be able to articulate what it means for people. And through the work of our communications experts across the Internet Society and the Foundation, we're getting much better at that. And you see that, I think, at different board meetings and videos that we're able to share with you. And next year, we're driving towards a much stronger unified communication strategy that will bring all of these different strands together into a a truly coherent and strategic approach to communications. But the first step was to get better at at telling that story. And I think we've done that this year. And in particular, and I think Chris will speak about this later, but the Who's the Run, Who Runs the Internet campaign turned out to be a rather inexpensive investment, but a highly well, we got a lot of interaction with that with that campaign. And it came at the right moment in the WISsis discussions that we were able to connect the communications campaigns with our advocacy work. And so we we've learned from that. There's some important lessons that we've learned from that that we want to take forward next year. We can keep going. Defending and advocating for a globally connected Internet. We've had some conversations with the board about this. This is really important, I know, to all of you, and it's deeply important to me. The Internet and the the world that we work in right now is as complicated as I've ever seen it. There are the the issues that we care about are our front-page news, right? And governments and policymakers across the globe are trying to tackle a real and very serious public interest challenges when it comes to the Internet. Unfortunately, sometimes the way those play out is puts the globally connected, secure, and trustworthy Internet at risk. And we see it. It pops up everywhere. It pops up at the United Nations and then in individual governments, as our colleague here from Canada said. It feels like it's a daily, a daily thing. And so our ability to be a leading advocate for the Internet is as important as ever. So what we have been working this year to do is is injecting data, particularly from the Pulse platform, into our advocacy to ensure that we can back up our arguments with solid data, explaining the consequences, what we've talked about at the board, what's at stake if we don't get this right, and reinforcing the harms that will come if if the decisions that are made undermine the core values of the Internet. I think for next year, we want to aim towards a a much more unified advocacy approach because we think that the issues are, again, as complex as ever. The environment is as complex as ever. And I think the role of the Internet Society is as important as ever. And so being able to harness our our global community, being able to draw in the technical expertise from the IETF and the IAB into our advocacy will make us that much more powerful. But I think this is one of the defining issues for the Internet Society for the years ahead. To do all of this, our operational environment requires investment and and care. The the organization, the Internet Society and Foundation, can we scroll up, please? To keep going, there we go. The operations of of our organizations are are critically important and and working towards operational excellence is is something that is important to me and to my colleagues on the executive leadership team. We have a very solid foundation within the organization, but we know we have work to do. And I think we've made really important progress this year in improving the efficiency of our financial systems, stronger integration of different tools, and also ensuring that we have the capacity and the tool, the right tools in the right places in order to support a growing grant-making operation in the Internet Society Foundation. We also need to be able to have a much stronger data management system across the organization to make it easier to pull data to measure, well, A, to measure the impact of what we're doing and then pull the data in order to demonstrate that impact either to donors, to our board, to our community, and to drive greater transparency around what we do. And we have made strides in that area, but there's there's still quite a lot of work to do. And then finally, maturing our governance and compliance capabilities. As this board well knows, this was the year that we launched our Enterprise Risk Management Framework. And that was a huge effort by my colleagues. I really want to recognize Alona and Say for driving that forward. Really important work for the organization, especially at this time, that we can institutionalize and then mature a true enterprise risk management environment for ISOC. And we will be building on that in the years ahead. And also the compliance environment, as we take increasing sources of of donations from governments and other donors, we have to ensure that we have a strong policy and compliance environment within the Internet Society. And we've been driving that forward this year and making very good progress on that. Next, we can scroll up, please. And finally, what has all of this done? It has positioned us for greater impact in the world, and that's what this is about, right? We have a mission that the Internet is for everyone. We have a mission that promotes that we want to build and support an Internet that's a force for good in the world. And we want to do that on as big a scale as we can. And what we have managed to accomplish this year, and I I really want to call out Chris Locke and his his team, but I I think he would say, if he had the microphone, it wasn't just him. There was a really strong collaborative effort across the Internet Society that was agile, that worked quickly when opportunities came to us. And this year, we were able to to launch our Connectivity Co-Fund with donations from our our first partner with Meta as as the first donor to that. And then also launching the Safer Internet Fund with the Common Good Cyber Fund within that that will enable the Internet Society to support critically important cybersecurity efforts for the nonprofit sector around the world. This is a lot of work in one year. We probably should have done it over two years, but there were moments of opportunity that that we needed to jump on, and we did so. And enormously proud of the team of staff that worked together across the organization and really demonstrated the values that that are important to us of operational excellence, collaboration, and agility. And and so I think I I really do just want to call that out and how important that's been for us. What this does for the Internet Society, and you'll see this reflected in the financial reports that say we'll present, but also in the action plans for 26, is we are able to scale our work to to levels that that would not have been possible without these these additional funds. And so what you will see in the action plan, and I I had this moment about a week ago where I was able to finally step back and read everything in one sitting, is we see in 2025, and I I wrote these figures down, we committed to funding six community networks in 2025. The good news is, I think, we're funding nine this year. I don't want to steal your thunder. And we committed to training 1,400 people. In our action plan for 2026, we are able to commit to funding 25 community networks in next year and training over 6,400 people. And that's what the additional resources enable us to do. And you can see that scale happening across the different programs. And our goal was not to increase the size of the organization. It was really about increasing the impact we can have around the world. And so the the developments in the the revenue generation team have really enabled us to do that work and to scale the work of the Internet Society. As I I say in my report here, between 2019 and 2024, we awarded over $63 million in more than 1,000 grants across over 120 countries. That gives us the basis to drive a grant-making strategy that aligns with the strategic goals of the organization and positions us to be a really strong partner alongside other donors that share the vision that we have for the Internet. So that's really exciting, and I hope you see that. And as you read the action plans for next year, read that, read them with that in mind, the ability to scale. So with that, I will say I'm I'm grateful for for this year. It's been a a big year, a lot going on, but incredibly proud of the team that I work with across the Internet Society and Foundation. And I'm grateful for the support of the board and for the community and the work that we're doing. And I am happy to take any questions or comments.
Well, first, on behalf of the board, let me thank you for the work over the past year. It's it's always interesting to hear somebody give a retrospective. It it evokes the idea of sitting on a porch and thinking about the year past when we know, in fact, that you have been running full tilt for the past year, and there hasn't been a lot of time to sit on porches and think back. So it's good that this gave you a chance to do it, even though I suspect you will be running full tilt again as soon as the meeting stops. As we look back at the efforts of the year and think about impact, I think you've highlighted a number of areas of impact that are scaling effectively and without causing the the staff or the costs to grow linearly, and those are both great things. I think the need is scaling a little bit faster than we are. This is kind of always the problem. The the bad thing about things that go up and to the right in hockey sticks is sometimes it's the demand rather than your capability. We are seeing a huge amount of effort in various parts of the Internet ecosystem that are damaging to trust and safety. Misinformation and other campaigns, whether they're by nation-state actors or by others, have taken what had been an ongoing problem with scams and 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 similar and turned it into something where we see some countries actually making part of their economic growth hinge on the the use of these kind of large-scale farms for it. And we have to recognize that our ability to protect the people who may be affected by those is going to have to continue to scale as the efforts of those actors grow. So as we as we go into the action plan and as we go into the rest of the meeting, I think we're grateful for the impact you've been able to drive, and you and the ELT have been working incredibly hard to get to where you are in much less time than we could have anticipated. And that's something I think the board appreciates greatly. But the there's an old saw that says the the reward for doing your work well is more work. Sorry, but it turns out to be true. The work you have ahead of you is at least as challenging as the work you have behind you. And in many ways, the impact you've demonstrated that you can achieve is only going to drive us is only going to drive us to recognize that there's more work that needs to be done. And with that combination of approbation and warning, I'll turn it over to Victor.
Just one quick, simple question. Given all the work that's coming, and obviously, and I'd like to position that, is there something specific you feel we, as a board, need to be able to do for the executive team yourself, maybe in the upcoming year, or be prepared to, beyond what we've discussed previously, that you think might be something relevant over the next 12 months for us to think about?
Thank you for that question. And yes, Ted, I think we are at the point of the year where we look back and see everything we've done, but we're also at the point where we're looking at what's coming in 2026 and very mindful of what's in front of us. Our sense, and I think you will hear more of this from Yogesh and Chris, is as challenging as this year has been for our partners, especially in the nonprofit sector around the world, next year will be even harder. And the funds that have, you know, the funding, there was, in some cases, the funding was cut this year, but the implications of that will really be felt next year. And so the Internet Society, I think, is really going to have to be in a position to be very agile in how we think about what we can do to support the community that we're a part of. And what you will see in some of our plans is a request for agility, our ability to do a little bit of what we did earlier this year in the emergency funding that we were able to move out the door quickly when we needed to. I think having the board prepared for that level of agility that we need, the ability to make some of those decisions quickly, but also know where we need to say no and know what we are capable of doing and what fits within our mission, being really, really clear that we have a strategic plan that we're working within. And we are driving towards those results with sufficient agility to be responsive to a really fast-changing environment. That's what I think the board can really do to support us, is be ready for that, ready for us to possibly come in with new ideas, possibly opportunities, or some challenges that we've discovered partway through the year that nobody could have anticipated and be ready to respond to those. And we've demonstrated that this year, I think, with the board. And so I think you can just expect more of that.
Any other comments or questions for Sally? Okay.
Thanks, Ted. To also say, to join Ted to say thank you and well done, Sally. I was looking through the, I think it was one report that I had time to go through because it was on Board Effect before Doomsday yesterday. But just to say thank you for all that you've done. I like the fact that you reeled out some numbers that you had committed to in the beginning of the year. And there's, of course, clear evidence that we're surpassing those numbers. But just like Victor said, it was also important to hear how we may be able to support you better. I guess when you're responding to that, and you already did. And also to hear around the funding, it actually gives me a lot of concern because I know this year is like the tip of the iceberg. And I know that Chris and team have also been working on some amazing models for fundraising. But that they're quick opportunities that you're seeing in the horizon. You know, we always say when one door closes, another one opens, even though the freeze happened and a lot of funding got scrapped off the market. We also know that new funding mechanisms are coming up. And so it would be good to hear on that note how ISOC is trying to position itself to be able to capture those new resource opportunity trends that might be coming up that, you know, we may not know what it would look like now, but that's going to happen because foundations, donors are looking for different alternatives to fund. And the very good news that is happening is some of them are even mopping up resources to say, we want to spend this all now or we want to give this all out now. It'd be nice to really know what can we do and what the plans are to really attract such kind of investments. Thank you.
Thank you, Funky. You're absolutely right. I'll turn it to Chris in a moment. He can also respond to this. One of the things that we are doing is ensuring that we are very active in the donor community, ensuring that we have the relationships in the donor and that the Internet Society is understood to be a leading donor. This is, we haven't positioned ourselves this way in the past. And so establishing that reputation is happening, and again, happening faster than we expected. But we need to stay in very close touch with that donor community because you're absolutely right. It's changing quickly. We're seeing, I think we expect to see in the nonprofit sector something we don't often apply in the nonprofit sector, but a lot of mergers, acquisitions, things like that, where things are changing a lot. And ensuring that we aren't trying to catch up with that, but that we are part of that discussion every step of the way is really important. Chris was part of some of those just recently. And maybe I'll let him speak a little further to that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll talk about this a little bit more in the Foundation update tomorrow. But just to say, I was recently at a meeting of other technology and society donors where we were talking collectively about how we're coming to meet this moment, discussing exactly the things Sally just talked about, you know, how we are understanding where everybody else is funding what we're doing. And more importantly, how we're trying to build the co-funds that we have put together this year. I think what we've done is position ourselves fiscally, thanks to the awesome work of Say and her team, who were briefly in the room earlier on, but I thanked them for this many times. We've positioned ourselves to show that we are a very strong, well-funded organization where it is safe to put money, if there is a donor of any type, whether it's a government, a private foundation, even a private individual. We're a very strong and secure organization to be able to host funds on behalf of other people. We are a very content-rich and experienced partner in this sector. We are not a generic 501(c)(3) co-fund, of which there are many. We are absolute global experts in this topic and in this area. We also have the ability to get the grants out of the door and measure the impact and do that in a safe and reliable legal way. But the thing that surprised me when I was in the room with the other donors and we all shared what our plans were, we were the third-largest donor by capital in the room. And that was just on the board-designated funds. That doesn't include the recent money that we're building into the co-funds. And I think this makes us, as Sally has been saying, a really strong partner going into next year. And the challenge for us is to make sure we stay focused on our mission and we stay focused on supporting our community of chapters and NGOs and partners, but really rising to the moment of how we can bring in and crowdsource funding in a difficult year for funding to make sure that we are building and maintaining the field of actors that we partner with and that are essential in the work of ISOC and taking a more leading relationship there. As Sally said, we've not really positioned ourselves as a donor before, but actually, we're one of the biggest donors in this space. And we need to take that responsibility and, you know, wear that responsibility in a cohesive and coordinated way with all of our partners and NGOs.
So if I can add to what Chris was just saying, it has definitely been an effort where Say's team and Alona's team have done a huge amount of work to set up the structures so that others understand that funding through the Internet Society is a safe thing to do. But I think there's another part to that safety and to the impression of the donor community and the broader community about the Internet Society, and that's focus. And I really appreciate the extent to which Sally and her team have made sure that the broader community understands how the current strategy relates to our common focus, that the internet is for everyone. And that as long as we retain that touchstone and continue to come back to it, it will help others understand why we're funding, who we're funding, what it is we're trying to accomplish, and why they should come along. And I think, as you were saying, there are many different co-funds out there. A 501(c)(3) co-fund is not an unusual thing. But that focus connected to the structures that have been put in place is, in fact, somewhat unusual. And I think for our area, we are one of the ones that can continue to lead there. And I think Victor asked, what is it that the board can do? And the board can continue to support the staff in building out the structures that they need to accomplish these things. But we also have to make sure that the organization doesn't lose focus as we go forward through this. It's very tempting in any moment of growth to continue to broaden your efforts because you feel like, oh, there's new money. I can move left and right from the focus that we came into this with. I think the reality is our biggest impact is actually if we retain that focus. And the need within that focus is large enough that I think there's almost no risk that we will ever have so much impact we're done. If I'm wrong on that, I hope in the right way. So once again, let me thank the whole staff for delivering on the past year. And I think we are probably ready to turn to the future. I guess, Yogesh, you're going to lead us through the action plan.
Sure. It's cute, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yep, sorry. You have the ISOC update first. One more looking back before we start going.
That is correct. That is correct. So I do have two segments. The first 45 minutes are going to be a review of the 25 achievements. I'll probably just unpack a few of the details that Sally already shared at a high level. Probably give you some more numbers, Funky. You've all seen the slides as read ahead, so I'm going to make an assumption that all of you have gone through that. So my intent in this segment is really not to hit every single bullet, every single number on that slide, but to keep this slightly at a higher level. Hopefully, it'll spark some discussions and talk a little bit about how all of these experiences in '25 have kind of set us up for '26. All right, so let's go to the next slide. On the agenda, like I said, I'll start with a bit of a broader context. I'll touch on how essentially 2025 became a pivotal year that has allowed us to do a lot of foundation building, but which now enables us to scale. And Sally talked about that, and she quoted some numbers. We've got, you know, I would urge you to sort of look at the 25 numbers and compare them to 26 numbers, and you will see how scale is being achieved there. Then we'll go through some specific program achievements, and we'll highlight a few of the stories behind the numbers. It's good to throw numbers at you, but stories are much more impactful. I'll then dive into TSS. That's our Technology Solutions and Services Team. They are the back shop, the back office shop that enable a lot of what our frontline does. So I think it's important to understand what they've accomplished, how we're setting ourselves up for '26. We'll certainly talk about transformations. They're a big part of, they've been a big part of '25. They will, you know, remain a part of '26. And then I'll close with some lessons learned. These are some high-level lessons. These are not great revelations as much as reaffirmation of things that we've learned that are going to be pivotal as we dive into '26. Let's go to the next slide. So we are very much in the first year of our five-year strategy that has allowed us, frankly, to become an organization that's a learning organization. We've learned quite a few things. We've learned from what has worked. We've certainly been adapting to a lot of changes around us. And we're capturing those insights to shape how we're going to operate in '26. We learned how, quite frankly, to be ambidextrous. You know, most of our advocacy work and fellowship programs, you know, these are all long-term engagements. I call these the slow burn. These are things we think of in, you know, two, three years timeframes. So you've kind of kept our eye on the ball, if you will, on things like encryption and CSAM and age verification and, you know, doing a bunch of amicus briefings and all that. But we've also demonstrated that we can move fast on a dime if we need to. The best example that sort of comes to mind is, you know, when recently Taliban shut down the Afghanistan's internet. We moved quickly to support a research team out at George Washington University. And they're doing a pretty interesting study to assess the human and economic impact of that shutdown. And that report's going to come out later part of this year, in about six weeks or so. So, you know, Sally touched on agility. I think as much as we want agility from the board, we have to be positioned on our side to take advantage of those opportunities in a very timely manner. So that impedance match is going to be very critical between us as an organization and the board. So I look at it as, you know, we've demonstrated what I call strategic patience, where we have the ability to look outside on the horizon, but also pair that with operational agility, which I think that balanced approach is going to be absolutely critical as we dive into next year. Let's go to the next slide. Now, we did a lot of foundation building in '25, that's for sure. But, you know, we also delivered strong measurable results. So I'll keep this at a high level here. Fundamentally, we essentially, you know, validated our approach to deliver impact. We have six programs, as you know. We've trained more than 6,000 people. We've supported IXP's and community networks. We've strengthened policy influence through advocacy fellowships and through our work at the UN. We've launched initiatives like Partner Up and Nonprofit Builder to support chapter capacity and sustainability. But most importantly, I think we baselineed our two core programs. That's the CCC and the ERA. That's the Community Centered Connectivity and the Reliable, Affordable, and Accessible Programs. And what it allows us to do by way of this validation is now we can replicate that around the globe, right? And that's powerful. So proving that out this year was important. Now it's about scale, so we can multiply. So let's dive into some of the highlights of those two programs next. Go to the next slide. Actually, keep going. Yeah, Community Center. So this year, the Community Centered Connectivity, in our opinion, sort of came into its own. We distributed nine community network grants. We trained more than 2,500 people. I think our target was like 1,400, and we hit 2,500. So now we're up in the game, as you will see. When I get into '26, and I don't want to steal the thunder from the '26 action plan by giving you the numbers, but they're pretty high. And we engaged 57% of our chapters. So these are all far exceeding our targets. But really, the bigger story, as I see it, is kind of define what community-centered truly means to ISOC. I think this is a program that's all about empowering communities to own and sustain their networks, blending both the technology, you know, training and entrepreneurship to ensure that the local impact really is lasting. We kind of saw good examples of that in Kenya with the Kakuma Ventures, where connectivity is driving refugee-led businesses. And also in Pará, Peru, in Panama, where indigenous communities are using the internet to preserve their culture and build resilience. I wasn't sure I was going to play the video, but I think we are okay on time. So there's a short two-minute video. Let's see that. Quite nice.
We had the opportunity to design a program, a project that could connect parts of these indigenous communities. Really, the reason is because they're always forgotten.
You can't really do community networks unless the community runs it. It's more of a, you know, we'll help build it. We'll show you how to do it. But after that, it's you.
Estoy encargado de administrar la red comunitaria. Antes solamente los que nos conocían eran personas de que venían a visitar la comunidad y solamente venían de esa manera.
Y ahora sí manejan la computadora.
No olvidan nuestra cultura, nuestro idioma, nada, nuestro vestido. Lo llevo subido desde la comunidad.
Ellos nos envían, nos llaman y entonces dice bueno necesito tanta artesanía.
El internet no ayuda mucho como el yapi. No sé si conoces el yapi.
Aunque no se va a hacer efectivo, pues se puede pagar en banco del INE.
Obviamente es un atractivo para todos los visitantes. Le hacen una presentación de sus danzas, una enseñanza de cuál es su vestimenta. Logran hacer una caminata alrededor de la comunidad.
We've seen the huge benefits brought to the communities that we've done in Panama.
De alguna u otra manera debemos nosotros hacer algo para poder que, que avan, que avancemos sin perder nuestra diversidad.
Esta comunidad que se llama Pararapuru estamos ubicado en el río Chagre.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. You know, we have a, our cops team does a fantastic job of putting these videos together. And I often tell first myself and a lot of my team members, you know, we have hard days at work. There's no, you know, we do wonderful work, but there are certain days that pretty hard. I always go back and say, and let's go look at a couple of these videos because it sort of brings everything back to why we do what we do, right? So it's a powerful flip point. It is for me, and I encourage others to do the same thing. So here, I think, you know, as much as we feel good about everything they were doing, we also learned some lessons. As we dive into next year, as we sort of focus on the women led enterprises and indigenous communities and the refugees, we think we absolutely need to evolve our partnerships. We need partners who sort of are in the, in those communities, they're, they're like physical presence, where they bring a level of expertise perhaps that, you know, we will never get. And partnerships are going to be key. That's a message that you'll probably continue to hear from, from all of us as we move forward. We also, we have some internal mechanics. We need to refine a little bit of our grant model and how ISOC side works with the grants team a little bit more effectively. And we're also going to equip our staff to engage, you know, more, more effectively with this diverse community that we have. They all have different cultures and languages and all that. We just need to be a little bit better equipped to, to handle all that. So fundamentally, I think we're really proud of the team, not just for meeting, but exceeding many of the targets that we've got in twenty five, and you'll see that in twenty six, we're sort of upping the game. You'll see the numbers dramatically increase. Let's go to the next slide. All right, so affordable and reliable. This particular program has been, has been quite successful in twenty five as well. We supported, as you see in the numbers, fourteen IXP's. We've got twenty three technical communities. We had twenty pairing events, and we trained over twenty four hundred people here. Now, look at the numbers of people that we train. These are like many universities that are running. It's, it's quite powerful. So we've surpassed nearly all of the targets. There is one target that we didn't meet and we likely not hit, and that's the ASN one. Let's kind of tackle that upfront. I think this was a, this was a particular target that generated some discussion last year. And I actually went back and listened to the dialogue from last year. And, and I think we got a little bit of kind of a heads up warning, like be careful. You know, there's some weirdness that happens with large network operators who'll just split their network into multiple autonomous numbers and all that. So we kind of share that. We, we agree. It is, it is probably not the best indication of how we need to measure this thing. So I talked to Michukey and a few of our experts in house. And, you know, at best, that number is an interesting trend. So we will track it as trend. We, we don't believe that it should be a board reported metric as such. We'll, we'll, we'll show you as we get into the twenty six, how we're going to actually measure some of this thing. So I think you told us it was challenging last year. We agree with you. We're, we're going to come close to hitting that number, but not hung up on that number as much as a nice trend that's pointing in the right direction. All right. This year, we kind of formalized the, the ERA model. Again, what does that mean? We created a framework that integrates the, the technical stuff and the policy and the corresponding economic models that allows to call it a true framework. And we basically need to expand this in, in some of the, the least developed and, you know, the SIDS space. That's an area that we totally recognize we need to do better at. We had a discussion literally yesterday talking about how we need to develop a strategy for that. SIDS strategy that kind of spans the whole globe. And maybe we need to sort of focus in certain regions where there's, you know, greater interest to achieve some, some rapid success. Partnerships were crucial here as well with the entities like NSRC and like IX to local chapters, all helping us move from essentially isolated projects to very collaborative ecosystems. Specific examples like in South Sudan, the ISOC chapter led the launch of the country's first IXP following our pairing roadshow, which was a major milestone for that community. In the Pacific Islands, where we need to do more, we totally recognize that. We actually brought an expert onboard in middle of June, July timeframe, middle of the year. He's helped us drive, I think engagements in Fiji and Vanuatu and Timor-Leste. But we totally recognize that we got a lot more to do, right? So this is an area that we're going to put some focus on. We also learned a lot about scale, you know, particularly the importance of capacity planning and realistic budgeting. I think there's an area that the team feels we got to do a little bit better job at. So we'll focus on that as we dive into next year. I think enough about that one. Let's, let's go to the next slide. OTS, Online Trust and Safety. Sally talked about that. And, and, you know, I can't emphasize enough, this is an area that truly was a fantastic example of co-creation. We did fantastic work this past year with chapters and SIGs and, you know, basically to address the online risk through, through a community lens. We exceeded several targets, and I think we're on track to hit the rest of them. I mean, some of these numbers are just short, but the year is not over yet, right? So we engaged, as you see, thirty five percent of our chapters. Again, trained twelve hundred people, and we conducted pilot sessions across several, several regions here. Two, two key things that kind of stood out. One, from the, the landscape of, you know, the online safety that we saw, that landscape is pretty fragmented. There's a lot of content out there. But that content is not, it's not cohesive. It's not, it's not easy to, to consume or digest, right? But good content nevertheless. So I think the team felt that there's an exercise here to curate that and, and put it in a very structured manner, in a meaningful way, purposeful way to the community. So what we're going to embark on this year is to build what we're calling the OTS hub, the Online Trust and Security Hub. It's essentially going to be a platform that'll bring all that together in a, in that cohesive manner. Second, you know, we also learned that context really matters. You know, it's one thing to just put content out there, but it has to work. It has to work for the targeted audience. So I think we're going to spend some time on, on, you know, the language and cultural aspects of it and make sure that stuff is hitting the mark. Our pilot in El Salvador, that we ran with LACNIC and cyber volunteers. It showed how the partnerships really help us multiply the reach and credibility. So basically, as we move into twenty six, we're going to build on this model by inviting many of the org members like Meta and LinkedIn and so on, Mozilla. And we'll collaborate with them. They do a lot of work in this space and training and awareness. So our intent, like Sally said, is not to create the invent from, the content from scratch. That's, that's not where we're going to drive the most value. It's actually identify that, bring it all together under one move. Okay, so basically, it's the, you know, it's to protect the users and build some digital confidence and resilience in the environment. That's what we're after on this program. Hey, let's go to the next slide. Again, here are the numbers. We delivered some solid results here. Thirty policymakers attended our policymakers program. We got seventy seven percent of the chapters who participated in the advocacy activities. And we also launched this new community advocacy fellowship. There were like eight hundred or so applicants. We selected fifty six of them. The program is going quite well. And these fellows were trained through a couple of workshops who did one in Santiago. I believe Sally, you were out there. And then more recently, we had one in Malaysia. We had to move that from Nepal to Malaysia because of all the unrest that we had the, that sort of erupted right, right when that event was happening. This year, we're also going to enhance our impact through some key interventions. You know, the amicus brief. We, we did this Cox versus Sony thing. That was, that was pretty important. We, we show leadership in the UN side and the business plus twenty processes. We talked quite a bit about that earlier, so I'm not going to labor on that one. And certainly the NDSS symposium that we, that we host, that's a, that's a fairly powerful platform. It brings a lot of the right people. And we had our first fellowship program on that that was quite successful. We're working on the economics of that. Quite frankly, next year, we want to get a little bit out of the hole. We see a lot of opportunity, getting a lot of sponsorships to actually cover, if not cover entirely, certainly defray the cost of that. So we, we firmly believe that, you know, that is, that the message of that a secure, open and globally connected internet benefits everyone is resonating with, with our audience here. And looking ahead, I think we'll expand our policy education for, specifically for diplomats and courts. We'll, we'll certainly strengthen the alumni engagement side of it. We train a lot of people. It's very important for us to actually leverage them and bring them back into the fold and get them plugged into the machinery, if you will. It, it's good to see them go out as well, but they need to actually co-create with us as much as possible. So we're not any longer responding to a lot of these policy debates. Not reacting to them. Reaction is good. We have to do that at times. But we're trying to lean in, lean forward and do a lot of things proactively. And that's another thing that you will see in twenty six is a very proactive agenda on the policy side. I think that's, let's go to the next one. All right, so Internet Insights and Innovation. This, this is a program that's anchored by what you know as Pulse. I think it's a crown jewel of our, our portfolio, quite frankly. I, I love everything that it does and what it brings together. It continues to grow as one of our most visible contributions, if you will, to global transparency and evidence based policy. We are again on target to hit most of our metrics. We have one hundred and sixty three Pulse media references. We have thirteen fellows that we, we trained up here. And we got multiple internet measurement forums that we've been part of. We've conducted, you know, we briefed the OFDS to you back, I think in Prague. And we made some progress on that as well. We've had a handful of workshops already. We got, I think, a couple more queued up for the end of the year. So it's good progress on that front, and, and you'll see that continue in twenty six as well. But if you, if you look at the Pulse, the real progress we made was making Pulse a little bit more accessible, more contextual. There's a lot of data there, but there's a story behind all that data. And I think we're going to work a little bit more on that in twenty six. We also did quite a bit of work this year on this, the WCAG two dot O. That's the accessibility guidelines. I think Dan's going to talk, he's got a whole section on that later today, so I won't steal that thunder. We did a lot of UI UX work this year, which I think is improving the usability of, of this particular platform, which I think is fantastic. And then we also launched this whole thing about Pulse Supporters Program. You know, there are a lot of folks that we partner up with who are users, but we want to make these users contributors, right? Because they generate a lot of data and that needs to feed into the, the platform. So I think that's powerful and you'll see that continue. And then on the, on, you know, one of the, the, the kind of the stories that is, is worth pointing out is there's a, there's a report that was written by Saudi Azim from our Calcutta chapter in India. I think the article was like, why shutting down the internet in wartime is a humanitarian failure? It's a pretty interesting article. If you haven't read it, I would take a look at it. It kind of captures the essence of what Pulse data is all about. You know, it's this data in service of, of people, highlighting, shedding a light on something that's important to humanity. So take a look at that if you get a chance. All right, next slide. Community. Oh, wow. This one, you know, there's one constant across all of our programs. It is really what I call the multiplication power of the community. It, it is truly a force multiplier. You know, I often talk about how our organization is like one fifty strong, but we have an audacious goal to have global impact. And you can't do that without the community. So community is absolutely critical. I think in twenty five, again, this, this group, you know, did quite well. We had ninety seven percent organizational retention. And this, by the way, is a, is a goal that you will see us join ahead with the foundation. Foundation has the goal to actually get new org members. These guys have the responsibility to make sure that we're not a sieve where members are leaving. So we got to retain the base. And we had a target, I think of ninety percent this year, we hit ninety seven. I can't read the number from this far, but but we did well. And I think the combination of those two goals will allow us to achieve what I call the year to year growth on an annual basis. Thirty six percent of our OMs are now participating directly in our advocacy work, which I think is a very healthy number. And we have an expanding calendar of a lot of regional events that are queued up that bring our community closer. We've done nine already. I shouldn't say queued up, they've done, they've already been accomplished. We've got nine that have already been accomplished. We got the last one that is queued up that we'll do before the end of the year. So we're certainly, you know, executing on all these projects jointly with many of our chapters, with, with many of our fellows that we've trained up and, and certainly our partners. But most importantly, we're co-creating and jointly, you know, delivering this impact, which I think is very powerful. Oh, and I can't forget the Internet Hall of Fame. We also grew that this year. We were recognizing, we were recognizing leaders whose work continues to, continues to be reinforced by ISOC's global credibility. So that's, that's fantastic. So as we look at twenty six, I think our goal is quite simple, very simple. I think keep the, keep investing in the community. That's, that's the force multiplier as, as partners, not really as, as participants. So that's going to be something that we'll continue to drive home with that team. All right, next slide. Now I'm sort of migrating from the programmatic work to a little bit behind the curtain team, right? It's the TSS, Technology Solutions Services. I think behind many of the successes that I just highlighted, there was a bit of a quiet and, and very important crucial support that TSS provided. Twenty twenty five, I think, was kind of the beginning of getting that house in order. We, we do want to modernize our tech platforms. We have a lot of tools. I mentioned that back in Prague. But one of the things that we've done is we've mapped, you know, just about every enterprise system that we have, the business functions that we rely on to the systems that enable that, right? So that was the first task we had to do because it's important to know what are critical systems that we're going to need to support those business functions. Then we've actually mapped those business and, and, and system functions to individuals, to groups. Okay, you know, you're a legal team. You focus on being a lawyer and be the expert that you have. You should not have to actually go out and, you know, manipulate the underlying technology and, and configure it. We don't want you to become techies while they can. They have the smarts to do that, but that's misuse of their time, right? And same applies to finance. Same applies to a bunch of other like flux and grant making and things like that. So we're trying to get a little better organized to actually map functions and responsibilities. So a lot more to come there. This is like early stages. But most importantly, I think what this group has also done this year is we significantly made a dent in AMS. We started the year with nearly six hundred, like five hundred and eighty or so tickets that were open. I was not overly concerned about the number of those tickets. A lot of those tickets are derivatives of the same ticket. And, and they're fairly trivial, but that's fine. We, we have to sort of pay attention to those numbers. But we retired a significant portion of that. I think we got rid of about three hundred and eighty of those tickets already. Team's done a fantastic job doing that. We're going to put another eighty, eighty five of them by the end of this year. We're testing those now, and my understanding is that we'll have those rolled out in the first part of January. And there's still lots to do. This, this is not something that'll stop and will declare victory. I think this is a system that people use. this is a system that people use and I fully expect lots more tickets coming our way. So we'll continue to attack it, but at least we have a process now to actually do a decent job. We also learned that the systems that we have, they only deliver value if you use them in an optimal fashion. And you know, this is another thing that we're going to invest in, in, in 26. We're going to do these health checks where we collaborate with the vendor whose product we're using. They come in and kind of study how you're using it and, and provide us some guidance on, well, maybe you should use it slightly differently, right? There's a better way to actually leverage the tool. So that's, that's a big investment we're making. All right. And, you know, like I said, we have lots of tools. We want to actually reduce the footprint. So the goal for, for this particular group is to deliver what I call a unified digital ecosystem, not, not a single system. A lot of people, when I talk about, well, we're going to just go to an ERP. We use SAP for everything. That's not a realistic thing for us. We made a lot of investments. We've got to protect those investments. So I call it reduced set of platforms so that we make our lives a little bit simpler. That's our goal. And, and two of our TSS members are sitting in the back. I hope they're taking note. They're right in the midst of doing that work. All right. I hope I'm not running behind schedule. I got just a couple more slides. Let's hit transformation. Next slide. You know, beyond our programs and, and our systems in 25, we made a lot of progress in the organizational transformations as well. So if you consider sort of the program work that we do as our commitments externally, these transformations are really our internal commitments, right? These are things that we're, we're committing to fixing and doing better in-house. So, so here we've kind of touched on a few of these things. We've strengthened our governance and ethical best practices. Sally touched on that. The whole enterprise risk management is a big part of that. We're focused on our talent, how we manage talent, how we leverage talent, how we build an inclusive workforce. Those are all things that are very important to us. And, and more importantly, how do we build strong bridges to our community? And, you know, AMS and some of the things that I talked about are examples of that. So, I mean, I can dive into specifics of governance and talent and all these things, but you know, this is a continuation of what we're, we've done this year into next year. And I've got maybe a whole slide on that in the 26 action plan. So let me defer that, that discussion until then. So let's go to the next slide. So I said I would have some, some key lessons. Again, these are not major revelations. I just want to highlight that again. These are things that were reaffirmed through our experiences in, in 25. First is that partnerships are really the cornerstone of scale, as you see there. With just under 150 staff, you just can't do it all, right? We need to rely on partners. These are partners that are donors, they're grantees, they're implementation partners like NSRC, they're fellows. Now, these are people that we need to bring into the fold and leverage them more effectively. In 26, we'll, we'll kind of strengthen or deepen our collaborations, especially with, you know, the three, the focused entities like the women-led enterprises, the indigenous networks and the, and the refugee committees, communities. Second, I think data, data is what I call the connective tissue, right? Again, I talked about reducing the footprint of our toolsets. When you have lots of tools, you have lots of data chains and these chains are silos. And if just, if we get one benefit out of reducing that toolset to fewer set is to just bring that data closer to each other so that we can create a simple data lake and we can mine it for intelligence. So that's going to be key. And I think the importance of that sort of hit us right in our, in our foreheads. So we're taking some actions next year. Third, I think the agility and the evidence. When they're fused together, those two things, they create some magic. They make advocacy certainly very powerful. So we'll institutionalize agile advocacy. I talked a little bit about, you know, being ambidextrous, we got to react and we also have to be leaning in and have a proactive longer-term agenda. So we're going to focus on that in a big way. And then finally, you know, talk about our empowered communities. Our communities truly are force multipliers. So we'll deploy, you know, tools like the OTS hub, co-creating it with the community, not giving it to them, but working with them to create that. And we'll invest in, of course, training and, and, and we'll continue to collaborate with, you know, local leadership, many of them you saw here. All to drive what I call sustained community-led impact. So together, I think these are the lessons that were very obvious in 25 and they're shaping what we're going to do or they're shaping what and how we're going to do things in, in 26. All right. So a bit of a recap. Let's go to the next slide. To close, and again, we'll talk a lot about 26 right after lunch. We've, in 25, strongly feel that we built the, the foundation that allows us to now scale. But it was more than just building the foundation. We show, we showed some measurable impact and shared a lot of numbers with you here that kind of proves that the model that you've got works, right? You just have to now continue to focus like Ted talked about and make sure that we, we hit it out of the park, not just in 26, but in beyond. And we also learned and adapted, like I said, there's a lot of, the landscape continues to change. And I think for the foreseeable future is going to be remaining, is going to remain volatile. So our ability to adapt and goes back to that, that comment from Sally in response to Victor's question about agility, you have to be agile to move with the ebb and flow of what gets thrown our way. But we have to keep our focus because, you know, it's very easy to get distracted and you know, and we've talked a lot about, you know, doing less and doing a better job of lesser things is more important than just high numbers. So we're going to continue to keep our focus on that. And, and I'm certain that with your support, with the agility that we just talked about, we're going to be okay in 26 and actually better than okay, we'll hit it out of the park. All right. So that's the 25 cap. We'll talk about 26 after lunch.
Thank you, Yogesh. I like the detail that you put into this overview. So it, it, it raised two disjoint points for me. One is the online safety. You mentioned it being fragmented and lacking context. If there is one area where I think you could make an incredible impact is being able to create that hub and putting the context around it. The number of times I've had conversations with somebody who wanted to teach online safety to some community and the first thing they do is say, I have no idea what material to use. So I think that's, that will be incredibly important. The second one, you can't laugh. When you talked about reducing the number of tools and trying to consolidate the data, don't consolidate the data into one single location. If there is one thing that you will do is create single points of failure that will make it incredibly hard to recover from.
Could not agree more. I'm a huge fan of distributed queries. There's nothing wrong having, having data sit in multiple places and, and create a logical pool that you can actually draw from. When I, when I talk about consolidating data, it's not putting it all in one physical domain. Spot on.
Yeah, it's the make the discovery easy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Keep it decentralized to make it resilient.
Yeah, yeah. And by the way, on your OTS, you know, we've got people in this room who I'm trying to tap to actually do a phenomenal job on the OTS hub. So I hope they're listening and paying attention on the comment that you made. Absolutely agree. That context is actually critical. Yeah.
Any other questions for Yogesh? Okay, we're running a little bit ahead, so I'm going to ask that we bring up the accessibility update. Because that, I think that will, that will fit within the time we've got nicely. And then we can head over into lunch. So I guess Sally, you're kicking us off.
Thank you, Ted. The Board of Trustees adopted a resolution in April 2023 regarding accessibility or an accessibility policy for persons with disabilities, requested that the CEO shall formulate a comprehensive accessibility operational framework and fund allocation and a report all year at every board meeting in, in 2025 on our progress on that work. I've asked Dan York, who has been leading that work for the Internet Society since he was already here for the IETF, to, to stop by and present to you. In part because he knows a lot about this, but also because he has really been driving the progress that we've been making. And I wanted you to have a chance to hear it directly from him. So we've made, I'm really excited and proud of the progress that we've made. It's increasingly becoming part of the culture of the Internet Society in how we do our work and how we present our work out in the world. And a lot of that is thanks to, to Dan and the leadership that he has provided internally on this. So over to you, Dan.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Sally. Making sure everybody's awake on there. So apologies for that. Yeah. And thank you all for the support you've given over the years for this effort and for what we're doing. As you can see on the slide, this just basically says, a year ago, we came here in the November board meeting and Sally presented the framework that we said that was over the next five years. This is the work that we're going to do to build a culture of accessibility and, and bring our, our pieces on there. We needed to deliver to you the accessibility operational framework and the website accessibility plan. This is now one year into that plan. Where are we? What are we doing and how are we going from this? There is an accompanying document that did step through each of the different items in that framework. So if you want the, the complete details, it is all there. The first piece that we highlight here is just that we, we did, there's a background here that we have some of our folks on our teams that are very, you know, very passionate about accessibility. When we redid the Internet Society website in 2017 and when we built the foundation website in 2018, 2019, we had already started with an, with a focus around ensuring these were accessible in some way. But this year, we really focused on auditing those and, and focused around what could we do? The good news, as the, the chart shows, was that we, we, we scored very well with the one particular vendor and the testing that we're using around that. And it was, it was great, so great. In fact, you know, that we were able to go and look at stuff and what did we need to do? How do we need to work with this? And, and that worked very well. So we've been doing that. We have another set of sites as well that we'll be working with to, to further go through this process. But the good news is we've been finding stuff, we've been fixing stuff. And when we were here last year, one of the things was we weren't sure what the audits would turn up and whether we would need a large amount of funding, quite honestly, to go and do some, some work to fix this and correct this. The good news so far is that we've been able to fix it all. It's just, it's within the realm of what we can do, what our teams can do. And we haven't had to do any kind of major resets on things or some. So it's, it's all been working really well with that. I give a lot of credit to the, the teams within Yogesh's TSS team, some of the developers within Pulse and some of the other folks who have really made this happen. We've also focused a good bit on our events, making sure that our own Internet Society and Internet Society Foundation events are held in places that have as few barriers as possible. We've also been working with the Accessibility Standing Group and the group of that group, which is also involved with the IGF's Dynamic Coalition for Accessibility and Disability, to take guidelines that were developed within the IGF's DCAT, as they call it, to make those available out in a wider range. So if you go to the foundation's website and you apply for a grant in there and it's for an event, there is a piece that's shown right here that says, you know, we encourage you to use these guidelines as part of your planning. There's other elements in other places. We're doing that as well. Some of the other things that may be less visible to folks but are out there is that we have been working very strongly to make templates internally available for our staff and for others so that they can be able to use and create documents, create slides that are accessible to people with disabilities in some form. Like anything here with accessibility, it's not, you know, once and you're done. It's an ongoing piece. You can have a fully compliant website. You can have a fully compliant template, but the minute that somebody goes and puts an image in there without alternative text, it is no longer compliant. So it's really building a culture, building a piece around that. What I liked with the folks who involved, who created these templates was that this is just, you're not going to read that there, but it's to show you that as part of the templates, it includes a whole range of guidance to people so that they can be able to go and know and work with that. And that's some of what we're building on the own internal pieces. We also this past year came out with a chapter website template, replacing one that we'd had earlier. So chapters could be able to go and, and develop their websites using this template that's out there that has Internet Society branding and all of this. It is also fully WCAG 2.2 level AA compliant from the start. Again, it's only as compliant as people continue to do it. There is guidance within the template about what you need to do to continue to, to, to use this and work with it, but it's out there. So it's another tool that we've provided in this way. We've also continued to work with the Accessibility Standing Group. The picture on the left over here was a, a meeting that we had in IGF in Riyadh. And, and actually a little comment, former board member, Dr. Mahamad, Mahamad Shabir is there. And what you're seeing Sally hold right there is actually a copy of the IGF DCAT Accessibility Event Guidelines entirely in Braille. So he had printed this and, and brought it with us and, and, and gave it to Sally while we've been there, there. But this is part of the piece. The picture on the right is Gunella Aspring. Some of you may know her from the Accessibility Standing Group. This was just a greeting, a message she gave as part of one of our internal staff meetings. So part of what we do is bring in voices from our community to those and she was speaking to us and work with it. We continue to meet with the ASG every, every, every periodically time and they saw this report. They provided comment on this. So the, the information that you get here has been reviewed by the folks that are there as well. We had two areas that we had said we were going to do in 2025 that we didn't do. One was just an internal staff toolkit and that we were working on and it just for a variety of reasons, it, it got delayed and the element of things, we're still working on it. It will be moving into there. And then the second one was for what Yogesh just talked about. There's kind of a review of the internal tools and the pieces we were using. And so we didn't spend a huge amount of time doing an accessibility analysis because we're in the process of changing what those tools are or at least evaluating what they may be. So that will be pieces that we continue on around that. In 2026, we're going to be continuing the auditing and the improvements that we've had on our websites that are there. We have a wonderful developer in our Pulse team who has been basically redoing segments of that site as it goes on, but he is somebody, Garrett Cokely, and then we also have Henri Wolfarth in our, in our team working on other sites. But Garrett has been focused on every time we redo part of that, he's doing extensive testing to make sure that Pulse is, is exceeding the accessibility pieces that are out there. So it's, it's just wonderful to see that work happening around there. We'll be working on the internal training toolkit. We've identified ways that we can build in components into the compliance training that staff are doing. And looking at a content training piece around sort of helping people understand that, again, you have those templates, but they're only great until you don't put in an alt tag. So, and that's a simplification, but that's an example of the kind of thing that's there. So that's a bit about what we're doing. As I mentioned, we did have a budget allocation. We do have a budget allocation in board-designated funds. We turned out not to need to draw on it in this first of the five years because we did not, we, we found our, our systems and things were in a better place. That was great news. We will, we do expect to draw on it this year as we look at some of the training modules and the pieces that are there. So stay tuned. You'll see reports of that as the year goes on through. And I believe, oh, two other things. One was that the Accessibility Standing Group has been working with our training and e-learning program. And they have developed a course, oh, I need to push the button here, that is, is offered through our e-learning training program and it is the Disability Leadership Training in Internet Governance and Digital Rights course. They've been running it a couple of times. They're still working, testing it, developing it further. But actually, again, people that I saw, showed here before, Gunella and Dr. Shabir are both involved with that project and working through with that. The other piece, which is sort of adjacent to this work, is that we did become a founding member of the Coalition on Digital Impact or CODI, which is not directly related to accessibility in terms of disabilities, but it is looking at how do you make websites accessible in people's native languages. And so it's another industry-wide effort that we are involved with in, in a way there. So I believe that is it. You will continue to see quarterly reports coming to you. And if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
So Dan, as one of the trustees who worked with Shabir on drafting that resolution, I thank you for the work that's gone into this. I thank you for the work that's gone into this. One of the key points is establishing a culture of making this happen. And that's clearly, you know, where you guys are. So thanks for the work.
I also want to thank Dan and your team's work and also working closely with the ASG to get it all done and so on. So my only two points, one point is, will you actually at some point probably highlight this as a sort of achievement? And letting the wider community know about the thing that we're doing internally as well as, you know, maybe as an example and so on. I think it's a good example to highlight. And second, that nice picture with, you know, everyone and Sally and the, and the rest of the ASG team members. The meeting room five looks a little bit strange on top of it. Can you AI it to be something that reflects, you know, about accessibility and so on? But just, 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 anyway. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your kind words. We are looking at how we can make more information available. And in one of our pieces, we had talked about how do we make those audits available in some way that's, that is knowledgeable for people? But part of, as we get the content training component and other pieces, you know, it's designed, we're, part of our goal is staff, because that's what the mandate, what the goal was here. But part of that will also be able to be leveraged out to other people as well.
Okay, so I have Caleb, Sagarika, Chris, and then Fonke. So quite a queue between us and lunch. Caleb.
Okay. Thank you to both. I have to give Sally the credit because she's your leader, right? So she takes the credit for your job. Anyway, but thanks to Sally and, and to you, Dan, for the great job that you guys have done. I've also been an advocate of this. But the key I wanted to mention, Charles talked a little bit about it, but I will emphasize on the WordPress theme that you guys, template that you guys are, have. I have not seen you guys push it to the chapter, like advance it as much as you can. I wouldn't know if you've done that, but if you've done that, fine. But if you've not, can you please advance it as part of achievements that you guys have implemented this? Because this is coming from the community, right? And so if you don't push it out, tell your story, how, how are they going to know that you've done something like that? And then I see a lot of ISOC chapter websites not having similar branding kind of, right? And I feel that this will be a very good way to make sure there is some form of unified way. So please.
Thank you, Ken, for that feedback. I will relay it to the team involved with the chapter website template and encourage them to make sure that that's better known to the folks out there.
Yeah. And, and one more thing, just try as much as, while you're telling the thing, tell them to do like a video demo, walkthrough for some of those chapters that are not so savvy with web development, to know how they can do that.
Take that in part. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan and Sally, for doing that. But I'm being part of that training program with ISOC's Accessibility Standing Group for Internet Governance for the person with disabilities. In that, like, we had done two programs, one in Dhaka, one in Pakistan and one in Sri Lanka. So like, major problem was people were unable to access the e-learning platform. So by, yeah, by that time, it was like halfway through in 2024, end of 2024. But I don't know how much progress you have been doing into that one by now, because it's end of 2025.
Pass it down to Chris.
Yeah, this is actually a perfect segue because this is the update I was going to give to add. So Joyce, who runs our empowerment team, our training and learning programs, and myself at the more recent IGF in Oslo this year, met with the Accessibility Working Group and, and discussed this and looked at the positive changes we can make, not just in the e-learning platform. So to make sure that the content on the e-learning platform is as accessible as possible, but also the application process. One of the things we discussed with the group is making sure that whilst our application process is accessible as possible, we're going further than that. One of the things we discussed is the still relatively low proportion of people, whether it's our fellowship programs or alumni programs in particular, that come from this community. And what we discussed and Joyce is following up with the working group is not just making sure that our platforms are accessible, but also we're making sure that when we are advertising and marketing our training and learning programs, our fellowships and our alumni programs, we are doing it in a way that reaches those communities. Because making sure that the material and the sites are accessible is one thing. Making sure we are then marketing them and reaching out to those communities so that we can increase the number of people that have disabilities coming into our training and fellowship programs is another thing entirely. So we're working actively with the group after those discussions in Oslo to build on that.
So I believe that what we have done was the pilot programs, right? So like, we need to have the, an expansion or strategy to expand that throughout the chapters or the other, other organizations.
We agree. Noted. Thank you.
Okay. First to say thank you for that. And my, what I'm going to talk about sort of connects Yogesh's last closing slide with yours. And I think I heard when I walked back in, you talked about accessibility that goes beyond just accessible to persons, of course with disability and other, but also language. So I was wondering how that's going to work. Are you going to work with chapters? Or are you going to work with the communities that you serve? And what will the language priorities be? Because of course, I don't expect that will be, I don't think ISOC can take on board the entire language spectrum we have. So what will the, how would you choose which language you want to pilot with? And then that brings me to Yogesh's last paragraph. I think that's a very, that's a very, that's an amazing thing to do, to be looking at language accessibility. Because if you're talking about community and building community and making that one of your key four priorities, that was on your last slide, it's important to fulfill the, our mission, vision, which is the internet is for everyone. It can't be for everyone unless everyone has access to and understand. But thank you both. And I didn't have a chance to say thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. The, I mentioned CODI here just because it has a tie in with that. But if you go to codi.Global, C-O-D-I dot global, it is an organization that was formed this year, Ram Mohan of Identity Digital, Christian Dawson of the Internet Infrastructure Coalition, et cetera. They are, yep, there you go. And you can see the mission is to ensure that every person can navigate the internet in their own language. So we're, this is adjacent to our work. We're more monitoring, engaging, connecting, you know, supporting. It's, it's vital work to bring the internet to everyone. It's not part of our programs. We're not directly doing anything with this as part of our action plans or pieces. But I'm bringing it more here to raise your awareness. This is adjacent to the work we're doing. It involves some of the folks. And so it's, it's a project that's out there in the broader ecosystem to which we have connected. I'm part of the steering committee and some other pieces around that. So.
Charles, you have 30 seconds.
Very quick, quick point. We keep on talking about the chapters, but I just dawned on my mind that what about even the OMs? There are many of these, if not these commercial companies, they probably know what they do or not do. But there are many of them that are actually like organizations and nonprofits and so on within our OM communities. We should also promote and let them know about it too.
That, thank you for the feedback. Right now, our main focus is, you know, building that culture within our organization staff. And that's kind of the, you know, the crawl, walk, run stage of things. We're at that first part of getting that happening within there. Certainly, as we continue our work, we'll look at how we bring that out into the broader community. Thank you for that feedback. And thank you all for your support of this initiative and for helping us do this. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work. We are going to pause here for one hour. That means that we'll return here at two o'clock local time. If you're watching remotely, we'll, we'll be back in an hour. Thanks very much. Thanks, everybody. Welcome back. We are now going into agenda item seven, which is the presentation of the action plan. So that's going to be Yogesh and Katie. Yogesh, I guess you're starting?
Yes. Thank you, Ted. Appreciate that. So we just finished an earlier session where it was a recap of 2025. So now we dive into 2026 action plan. So thank you and good afternoon, everybody. Great to be back. So 2025, as I said earlier, was a foundational year. You know, the first of our five-year plan where we tested a lot of things, as I, as I mentioned earlier, deployed a bunch of pilots. We learned many lessons and I shared, maybe not revelations, but some, some core lessons that are driving us into 26. So 26 is absolutely the year to scale. And Sally touched on that. I'm going to expand on that a little bit. So this afternoon, I think we want to walk you through how we are connecting the 2025 Foundation Building to the 26 plan that's focused on scale, sustainability, and most importantly, you know, advocacy. That's a big part of what we're doing. So let's go to the next slide. So as we entered the second year of our 2030 strategy, our focus, like I said, is on scaling. Scaling fundamentally on what we know works. As I said last time, you know, the model works. So we're entering 26 with stronger partnerships, got better data. We're going to improve on that as we move forward and will certainly have a clear sense of what impact looks like. We briefed the impact measurement approach last time, which I think resonated with all of you. And that's the model that we're following. So last year's pilots, they taught us not just to, you know, what to do, but really how to do it sustainably. And I talked about the CCE and ARA, and I want to just kind of replicate that as we move forward. So the environment we are operating in remains complex. We have a lot of headwinds. And I think Chris is going to touch on that later on in his segment tomorrow. So things like affordability gaps and some of the geopolitical pressures that we all hear about and live and some of the emerging regulations. We just heard this morning from Roman about AI and all that complexity that comes to the table. All of that, you know, exists. But fundamentally, our capability as an organization has grown. So I think we take comfort in that in terms of how to make a dent moving forward. So in 26, we'll apply that capability through really four pillars. As I, as I look at our organization, I think of sort of our go-to-market pillars. And those are connectivity and security. That's how we sort of lean in. Certainly, we have our pulse and the innovation that's part of our portfolio, but it's really, you could think of that as a third pillar. And then the community and engagement is, is a bit of a horizontal that runs through those three pillars, right? So those are the core pillars that we're kind of building our 26 plan around. All right, let's dive into it. Next slide. So we are kind of seeing here the results of what I call true integration. You know, you see the programs, nothing has changed from last year. That's part of our 2030 strategy that we laid out. It's fusion of technology, advocacy and community engagement, kind of moving together, not necessarily as silos. Back in Vancouver, I think I remember discussion about how we felt all these programs are so intertwined. I called it the Rubik's Cube, and that's still how I feel today. Our program teams now share what I call the common evidence base, right? We got a single measurement framework that Katie had described eloquently last time. So success in one area is not just that success in one area. It's going to amplifies everything that we do. The partnership between ISOC and the foundation, you know, can't speak for the past, but I think it's working exceptionally well. The last eight, nine months that I've been here, seven months that I've been here, I shouldn't say eight, nine months. Feels like eight, nine months, but it's only been six months. It continues to mature. It's not just me and Chris talking regularly. It's really our team members. I see a lot more collaboration among those. And, and these are people telling me that, that hey, we're talking a lot more, we're collaborating, we're, you know, coming up with our work plans and our metrics and all that together. So that's, that's been a fantastic part of our journey so far. And I think there's a greater appreciation that we have to operate with unity of purpose and with that unified voice that, I know we're too discreet organization for a lot of reasons that we don't need to get into. But our mission is the same and we got to work together as a unified operation. So that's something that I'm really energized about. So let's look at how this integrated model that you're looking at here, how that plays out across our core programs. Next slide. So, you know, our community-centered connectivity program, it tackles really one of the hardest problems. I looked at some of the 25 slides, and if you look at the cover slides, they don't really fundamentally change. And that kind of goes back to the point that Ted was making, right? The problems remain, and they'll probably remain for the foreseeable future. It's our ability to actually make a bigger dent and have impact at a greater scale. That's really what we're talking about. So as you see these, you know, front-end slides, the problem statement is going to be very, very familiar to all of us. And I bet you it'll be the same next year, right? Let's look at the priorities on the next slide. In 26, or rather, in 25, you provided the model, as I call it. In 26, we're going to scale it through a new co-funding initiative that blends our ISOC resources with both government and private sector and donor support. You'll again hear a lot more about that from, from Chris tomorrow. We're expanding our grantee pipeline and we're strengthening our partnerships. So communities themselves drive deployment and sustainability. It's not about us, it's about enabling the communities to actually move forward. We'll continue to advocate for community network models, both at the national and global policy forums. That's a big part of what we do. So the goal is actually quite simple. The more people connected, the more communities that own their own networks, the stronger the policies that make our connections last, right? So that's, that's really what it's all about in terms of our priorities. Let's look at the specific measures, which I think will provide a little bit better color. How will we know how this thing is succeeding, right? So you saw we hit a lot of the numbers last year quite well. We expect at least 25 deployments that are going to be funded globally here, connecting some of these marginalized communities that we talked about. We gave you numbers. It was like 1,400 commitments. We hit 2,500 people. Here, we're upping the game. 6,400 people that we're going to train, right? To design and maintain and advocate for the local networks, which I think is, is a fantastic example for, for really harvesting and realizing that scale. Half of our chapters will absolutely lead or support community connectivity initiatives. And, and again, 50% of our advocacy actions in this space will yield, you know, favorable policy outcomes. And, and this is another metric that I'll hit on, and you will see that, you know, in terms of the percentage of things that we want to drive success through. This is a little bit of my background where, you know, when we competed for business in the commercial space, it was all about P wins. What is the probability of winning? And, you know, Sally and I and Chris, we all talked. We have, every time you go in and invest our dollars, our energy behind a policy, it's, it's competing. It's competing for something that we're not going to do because we're putting our energy here. So having clarity around what are our chances of actually winning? And winning here is, do we have influence over what it is that we're trying to shape by way of a policy? Is the policy going to come out the way we intend it to be? That's what fundamentally the, the percentage there are. So 50% hit ratio is kind of the, the bar that we're setting for this particular one. We're also piloting two technical solutions to make our community networks easier to scale. So these results, I think fundamentally will expand both, you know, reach and resilience. And, and I think they lay the groundwork or the foundation for our next challenge, which is making everything more affordable. So connectivity first, affordability next. Let's look at the next one. Russ, go ahead.
So I'm just curious how you're going to end up measuring that 50%? Because if it's an or in that sentence, when they do one of those things and you check the chapter, do the, or what, or if you're doing it more comprehensively, I just want to understand how you're going to measure.
Yeah, we will unpack that for you. So some of it we need to still kind of iron out. But, you know, anytime we actually invest in an effort to say, look, we want the policy to be X. I think there needs to be upfront clarity that the outcome that we're seeking has to come out a certain way. So I think to measure that part of it is not that difficult. You have to negotiate those things. They're not going to come out exactly the same way. So, so there's a subjectivity there that we're going to have to sort of manage. But as much clarity as we can bring upfront, But as much clarity as we can bring upfront, it'll just help smoothen our process to place our bets in the right places and to measure ourselves.
So I'm hearing incremental improvement on those.
Yeah, yeah, there's no like a flip of a switch here.
Makes complete sense.
Yeah. Any other comments? All right, kind of measured to look. All right. So if, if connectivity is what brings people online, bottom line is affordability is what keeps them there, right? So this particular program is all about strengthening the, the physical and the economic backbone that, that sort of defines this, especially in, in small island and least developed countries. That's kind of where our focus has been and will continue. Let's look at the priorities. Again, this is a kind of a anchor chart here. That problem statement hasn't changed from last year as much, right? So how, what are the core priorities here? We absolutely in 26 want to increase the support for local IXP's through grants and training. That's the core of what, you know, how we're delivering value. We want to foster stronger technical communities and we want to publish new insights on peering and traffic localizations. That's, that's fundamentally, you know, the goal here. We're coupling this with advocacy for policies and, and that makes sort of the local internet ecosystems thrive. We want to reduce costs, boosting performance and, and, and the core of it, building resiliency. That's really what it's all about. So essentially through this program, we are improving what I call the plumbing of, of the internet. I know it's not a sexy word, but that's really what it's all about. It has to begin there, right? So let's look at some of the metrics on the next slide. We'll again, measure progress through both reach and policy influence. We're going to fund 10 IXP grants here worldwide. We're, we're going to host 15 regional peering events and, and training around 1,500 engineers and practitioners. That's kind of our goal. Our goal for at least, you know, one fifth of the chapters is to contribute directly to these initiatives. And for about 60% of our advocacy engagements in this area to deliver favorable policy outcomes. So this is a little bit higher than the previous one. And offline, we can maybe get into why we chose a little bit higher number here, 60% P win, as I call it, right? So collectively, I think these efforts make the internet more affordable, certainly more resilient, locally owned for sure. And, and, you know, the core of it, that's the essential foundation for everything else that we do, right? It's connectivity and affordability. Any questions? Sorry, I'm going to keep looking. I'm a little bit more conscious because I can't see this side of the table. All right, let's dive into the next slide. Now connecting people is kind of half the job and we stressed and Sally talked a lot about the OTS and secure and trust. Helping them staying safe, staying them safe online is the other half. So this is all about online trust and safety. It's fundamentally equipping, you know, the newly connected communities with the knowledge and the resources to, to protect themselves. So again, this particular chart hasn't changed, the problem statement remains. This will remain a challenge for the coming years. Let's look at the priorities on the next slide. So in 26, we're expanding the Safer Internet Fund to support organizations that, that are working with women-led enterprises and refugees and the indigenous communities that we talked about. We're launching, as you heard last time, this Global Online Safety Hub, the OTS Hub, publishing, you know, localized material, again, in, in different languages, paying particular attention and sensitivity to the different cultures that we have. It has to be tailored, as, as I talked about last time, right? And we'll have some community trainer toolsets or toolkits that we'll develop. So chapters can run these things independently without, you know, virtually no help, minimal help, let's say, from ISOC. We're also going to pilot an anti-scam initiative. And, and as Chris talks about this tomorrow, this is kind of, you know, refueling the engine by taking some of the dollars and helping some of these other folks that are being attacked, which are the nonprofits, right? So you'll hear more about that tomorrow from Chris. So this work basically ensures that we expand connectivity, but more importantly, we expand confidence, right? That's what we're really after. Because fundamentally, a trusted internet is a functioning internet that gets used and it gets delivered, you know, it delivers value at the end of the day. That's what we're really, really after.
Sadrika, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So you were mentioning about the community trainer toolkit. So are we, are we have a strategy or a plan to select the community trainers? Like rather than, are we going to select as ISOC? Are we going to select those trainers or are we giving freedom to select those trainers from the chapter by itself? So how are we going to like implement that program?
Yeah, so, so I think some of the details we can share with you. The goal will be to partner with the chapters and all that as opposed to just be very directive and saying, we're going to select certain trainers and all that. We'll collaborate with the community to actually come up with that game plan.
Because my concern is we do need to have some sort of a consistency, like when we are selecting the trainers. Like we can't just say you select the trainer and giving them the toolkit. Because at the end of the day, the ISO global will be responsible for those, all those activities. So we need to have a due diligence on that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I'll talk about this a bit more when we go through empowerment in the Foundation Board tomorrow, where we have some data on how chapter training is working at the moment, but more importantly, what the satisfaction rate of the training delivered through chapter trainers is with the people that are attending those sessions and how we're managing that. So I can talk about that in the Foundation Board tomorrow.
But the point is well taken, Sadrika. I think consistency is absolutely going to be critical here. We can't be doing the same thing that we're trying to have a global impact 12 different ways. So we'll bring that discipline to the table, absolutely. Yeah. All right, next slide, we'll look at some of the success measures for this particular program. You know, through the Safer Internet Fund, our plan is to invest about $2.6 million in high-impact community projects. Again, like I said, from anti-scan campaigns to online safety training, all of that will be embodied here. So this is a big piece of, you know, what's not, the additional piece that we're adding to this OTS portfolio. We didn't have that last year, but there's a lot of granting that has to occur here and we're going to work very closely with Chris and his team to, to accomplish that. We'll engage the users directly, hosting, you know, focus groups. This building of this OTS hub is not going to be done in isolation. We talked a little bit about how we did the study in 25. Going into 26 doesn't really change that. The goal that we sort of put out there is, don't let's, let's not have a grand reveal in November or December by saying, ah, here's the, the hub. You know, we want a beta version that's out sometime in summer. Let's have some focus groups and let's bring the last mile, as I call it, and maybe it's more than the last mile, the last several miles together, co-creating this hub and making sure that it's serving the community. It's kind of like, you know, for the community, by the community. That's kind of the approach we want to take here. So at least 40% of our chapters and, and the SIGs will contribute to creating and sharing a lot of these local safety resources. So, you know, a lot of these numbers, they're really not just abstract numbers. They really represent, in, in my mind, the people who will genuinely feel safer as a result of what we're delivering here, right? This is, this is moving the needle as far as we're concerned.
So I, this is going to be one of the hardest ones to set appropriate measures for and to measure once you've set them. And I'm afraid that I think some of these are not necessarily driving us in a direction that is actually going to get us to succeed. So I agree with the, the part that having focus groups together, feedback is a useful thing, but to me, that's not really a goal, it's a method.
Yeah.
Right? What, what you're looking for is something different and that you're looking for a measure that indicates that some number of the people who pilot this think it's successful. And however many iterations it takes you to reach your, your target number that think it's, it's successful, that's what you're, you're going for, not the number of, of focus groups, right? That, that's a means to the end, not the end. And I feel somewhat the same way about this 40% of chapters, right? If you look at our SIGs, we have currently five approved SIGs. And some of them bear very, very directly on this, the cybersecurity SIG, the Affordable Internet SIG. AI, maybe not so much. I mean, maybe, maybe there's AI that can help you prevent scams. I'm, I'm not aware of any that, that doesn't just hallucinate that they have done that. But I, I think we want to be a little bit more careful about saying exactly who we're trying to get involved and what it is we want them to do. Because I think one of the things that we have a tremendous opportunity to do with the chapters is this work of contextualization. And when we're talking about online and safety, online safety and trust earlier, we were talking about how important it is to make sure that the information isn't just kind of generic, that it's, it's something that's consumable for specific groups in their own contexts. And, you know, when we, when we think about the different communities that need to be able to consume this, the kinds of things they need are going to be very contextual. That, that group that we were looking at before in Panama, what they may need is like information on what real banking looks like on the internet so that people can, you know, engage with them in ways that are economically problematic for them because they're not actually going to get paid for the work, where that might not be an issue for people who are seeking health information or other, other kinds of data. So I think we have a real opportunity here, especially with the chapters, to think about getting contextualized information. We probably don't want, we don't necessarily want them contributing kind of the baseline principles. Those we're probably going to be getting from experts. And I think we, we probably want to, to, to narrow this slightly so that we're measuring the right thing. Thanks.
No, I think, I think all that makes sense. I think the two focus groups, you're right, it is a means to that end. So what is that end we're striving for? We'll, we'll take note and we'll go back and see if you can come up with a metric that's a little bit more relevant. Spot on. All right. Let's go to the next slide. So open and trustworthy internet. Again, the internet's openness is, is still very much under pressure from restrictive regulations and fragmentation of standards that we keep talking about. Our role is to really defend and promote the principles that keep the internet open. And again, this will remain a challenge for the foreseeable future. Let's look at our priorities for this particular group. So in 26, I think our goal is to strengthen our advocacy leadership by building coalitions that, that unite our technical experts and policymakers and, and the various community voices that we have. We're expanding the policymaker program significantly, deepening our engagement with governments, with, you know, equipping basically the court systems, if you will, with the technical insight through our Amicus Program when legal rulings affect the, the integrity of the internet. So that'll, that'll be something that we continue with. And we're investing in our community, developing advocacy workshops that transform local leaders into skilled, credible champions for an open internet. So this is kind of how we plan to translate what I call technical capability into influencing policy. And, and that's, that's essentially the core of what this particular program is all about. Let's, let's look at how we're going to measure this. Our, our plan is to train 1,200 advocates worldwide. We're going to engage, engage about 70% of our chapters in policy advocacy. And, and our plan is to, again, deliver two regional workshops to strengthen their practical skills. We want to have at least 21 policymakers that'll complete our policymaker program and, and have at least 10% of that alumni from the prior years to support active advocacy efforts. I talked a little bit about it in, in the previous segment. The alumni network has to engage back into our work and it has to be a continuous loop. It can't be just that we set them free, right? Overall, our goal is that 60% of our engagements to produce favorable policy outcomes here. Again, this is the same thing I talked about. This is a P win. That goal is 60% here as well. Tangible proof that, you know, our, our voice that matters is actually having the right impact on the policies that come out. So bottom line, I think we want ISOC to be viewed not just as an, as an advocate for internet, but truly as a trusted advisor that is shaping the future by view of policy work. Any questions on that before I move on? Please.
I, I want to underscore something that Yogesh mentioned that's in these measures here. We restarted the community workshops this year and we are, we've held two advocacy workshops. Yogesh mentioned that in the previous report, to really zero in on building a group of advocates from around the world that can be active in their local communities. Really impressive groups of people that have come. They've come out of our chapters, many of them, and other partners in civil society. And the, the workshops that they went through were quite rigorous. But we don't want to just do the workshop, close the book and move on to the next workshop. What we want to see in 26 is those advocates that we have trained coming back into our advocacy work on whatever threats or opportunities we see in the year ahead. So, and the same is true with the policymaker program. We, we don't want people just coming to the policymaker program and then going home and not hearing from us again. Those are people inside governments that we can reach and engage with as we try to move something forward or in some cases, try to defend against an outcome we don't want. So really trying to integrate the advocacy alumni into our own advocacy is something that we want to double down on in 26.
So we're doubling down on getting 10%? You want to add to that number? We can pump it up. These are rookie numbers.
Yeah, we could. I, I think in part with them being volunteers, we have to, you know, we, we can't tell them to do it, but we, we, what I want to see from the staff is when there's an advocacy need or opportunity, one of the first places we, we go looking for support is within that alumni network.
So I think that's a great measure and I think from a staff perspective, you could make that a staff goal that when there's an advocacy need, the number of touchpoints that reach the, the alumni network is a percentage. So if you're, if you're considering adding to this, instead of making it their response, make it your offer. Because you can measure your offer and then as you go on, you can see what the rate of that offer to response looks like and what it, it's going to take on your part. Because I, I think all of our experience here is that once you get somebody linked into this, they continue to respond. They become an active part of the community and they, and they don't fall off of that except in kind of extraordinary circumstances. And so as you build that, increasing the number of touchpoints that give them those opportunities, that give them an understanding of what their impact is, is going to really improve this 10%. But maybe measuring that instead of the 10% response is the right thing for this year.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Any other? Okay, I don't see anything lit up. All right, let's go to internet insights and innovation. Now, you know, strong advocacy is, is always going to be dependent on strong evidence. And that's really what this program is all about. This is the Pulse platform that we're talking about. So let's look at some of the priorities here. Next slide, yeah. So in 26, our goal is to expand certainly the Open Fiber Data Strategy. We talked about that earlier this summer. That's already, you know, we've done some workshops that we talked about. It's really closing that global data gap that limits the infrastructure planning and brings that visibility that that program is intended to do. We'll, we'll complete the Pulse website upgrade. We talked about, you know, the, the UI UX work that we're doing, making it easier both to access and to visualize the data. That's a big part of, you know, we, we accomplished quite a bit this year, but, but there's a lot, a lot of work to do next year as well. Our fellowship and supporter programs will build a, a network of experts to turn this raw internet data into usable insights. And then we're also developing this data trust framework to, to standardize and safeguard the way internet health data is shared and, and used. We've got a consultant, Dave, Dave, Dave Covey, I think he, Jim Covey, Jim Covey. Jim Covey, he's an expert in this area and he's, he's helping us on that front. So the goal here is quite simple, to, to make ISOC really the world's most trusted source of truth, if you will, about the internet's health and resilience. That's how we want to be viewed as we dive into 26 and beyond.
So it's, it's great to see that the connection between this and the peering So it's, it's great to see that the connection between this and the peering fellowship. Because I think one of the things that, that we maybe don't link up in people's minds as much is the extent to which the peering gives some of the resiliency against the kinds of events that Pulse measures. And so it would be really great to see data as you go through the year on how the measurements Pulse takes are localized enough so that we can see the effects of, of local peering. Because, you know, obviously, community networks and, and IXP work is a big part of how we do the, the interconnectivity part of our, our upcoming year's action plan. And if we have measurements that go down to that level, I think we can both enhance what Pulse is telling people about what's going on at the internet scale, but also help people understand how those are maintaining resilience in, in the face of some of them maybe larger impacts. And I know we have seen this in, in some regional IXP's where the fact that those IXP's were, were carrying purely local traffic, they were not subject to some of the efforts of other territories to perhaps pull them off the, off the network. So that's definitely something we've seen in the past and, and some additional work to connect this is, is really good to see.
Yeah. Good. That's great. Okay. Let's look at some of the metrics here. Yeah. So we expect at least 10 organizations here to adopt the open fiber data strategy this year. That's, that's, I think if we hit that, that'll be phenomenal. Pulse data, we want to, we're going to have it cited in at least 20 countries international policy reports. We want to roughly have 35% of our chapters who use Pulse Insights to strengthen their local advocacy. We want to have really every Pulse fellow publish something, you know, publish some findings, reports. That's kind of a good measure to just make sure that they're leveraging this. And, and, you know, we want to convene five international measurement forums to advance collaboration and innovation. Those are some fundamental things that we felt pretty good about in terms of how we would measure progress on these things. Again, these are more than just statistics. They, they really represent the, you know, the, the trust and the global internet community is actually placing in, in this particular platform, both on data methods and, and the integrity of what we bring to the table. All right, any questions on this? Okay, let's, let's look at the community and partner mobilization. This is really, as I've said again and again, this is the greatest multiplier that we've got. A group of 150 people trying to have massive impact around the globe doesn't happen without the community. So every connection, every advocacy success, every local deployment, it really depends on our community. So our chapters, our partners, our organizational members, they're all members of that community and we got to just do a holistic approach to, to engage them. Let's look at the priorities. Next slide. In 26, our plan is to strengthen chapter capacity with training and mentorship while aligning them, you know, and our organizational members around shared advocacy priorities. That's something that we got to bring everything together, particularly around, you know, connectivity and online trust. Those are our two fundamental pillars that we talked about. We're also enhancing our membership engagement through better digital tools. You know, we talked about AMS, that journey continues into 26. And by hosting some of these regional dialogues and leadership exchanges that we, that we have in plan, will keep our network fairly vibrant and coordinated in 26. So this program fundamentally is all about converting community participation into an entity that gives us influencing power, right? That's what we're trying to do. And, and we want the entire global community moving in one direction with that unity of purpose that I, I keep talking about. All right, so let's look at some of the, the metrics here. We want to first and foremost make sure that all of our, all of our, you know, chapters remain in good standing. It kind of starts with that. So our goal is 90%. We'll do everything possible to collaborate with them to make sure they have the necessary tools and guidance to stay in good standing. At least 70% of the chapters and 40% of the org members will in fact join us in, in the advocacy efforts. We have to have that partnership at this level to do the advocacy. Our networks will drive approximately 20, not approximately, about, that's our target, 20 senior level government engagements. And we'll, we'll maintain 80% member satisfaction with 90% retention, right? This is the goal that I mentioned earlier. It's tied at the hip with what the foundation has in terms of growth. And year over year, we want to see this thing incrementally grow. So these numbers reflect really the health of the network itself. A thriving community is actually a stronger internet society. And here, I don't mean in ISOC, but the broader internet society, right? That's what we're striving for. Any questions or comments here? All right, let's go to the next slide.
Wait, I thought we also had a goal for gaining organizational members and I don't see that goal here.
Yeah, that's actually a, a goal on the
On the foundation side.
I see. So yeah, yeah. So that's, that's kind of how we're joined in that, yeah. All right, so if you consider sort of our programs and priorities that we just covered, much like in the previous segment, as our external commitments, our organizational transformations are our internal commitments. So I said I would spend a little bit more time on that, so let's, let's look at some of those things. Right? So 2030 strategy, define nine long-term pillars. Yeah, there you go. That's the right one. From powerful advocacy and impactful giving to data culture that is inspired by the local, by the global community, rather. So, so 26 is when all of these pillars sort of come to life. Not just as concepts, not that they were concepts. I mean, we made a lot of progress last year as well, but really as measurable systems that will, that'll deliver concrete results. We are, I think, in 26, we are well positioned to operate very much like a cohesive enterprise where every action from, from a grant to a policy statement, you know, to just about everything that we do, it has to contribute to the overall mission and strategy of ISOC. And that interconnectivity that appears very convoluted is something that we're really energized about. I think everything is tied together. So we believe we are strategically maturing at a point where, you know, our, our underlying data, data chains at least are known to us and we're going to simplify that as we move forward. And, and we, we actually feel that we have clarity of that direction and consistency of action that we're looking for to actually drive forward in 26. I can actually spend some time on, as I said, I skipped past in the, in, in previous segment on, on what these things are. But let's, let's kind of look at, you know, the, the, the various programs real quick. We're rolling out an integrated ethics and risk framework. We actually have already rolled that out to link risk management and accountability and governance. That's a big part of that. We're advancing our culture of excellence. This is a area that we spent a lot of time, actually, just the last couple of days in terms of what does that really mean? What is culture of excellence? What are the core attributes of it? And we've got a pretty solid list that we feel as leadership very comfortable about. We're about to share that with our, with our team. Our new co-funding model, that certainly will diversify capital and, and support more grantees. So we'll hear more about that from Chris tomorrow. We plan to enhance our association management system to simplify the, the whole community engagement. That's a core piece of how we mobilize the community and we have to arm them with tools that actually work, that are intuitive. And we are unifying our global communication strategy. We're using, you know, analytics to reach, to, to track and reach our reputation. I think this is also on the agenda tomorrow. Chris is going to talk about that unified strategy, but we all benefit from that. So these are some of the collective improvements that'll make us faster, make us leaner, more responsive. These are all some of the fundamentals of, you know, how we execute with, with excellence, right? Speed is very important. And, and these are things that are going to be absolutely critical for us to, to drive scale. Okay, next slide. So I think just a few closing comments. I shared some broad lessons learned. But if you look at our 26 plan and, and take a step back, you know, fundamentally, what's powerful about this plan is, is the integration. It's the integration of all the various programs and the supporting organizations, whether it's, it's the engagement or advocacy. Each, each pillar that we have kind of reinforces the next one, right? So think of it as, you know, connectivity is creating trust. Trust is strengthening advocacy. Advocacy is allowing us to build, you know, it builds on community and leverages community. And, and community is what ultimately gives us sustainability, right? So these are all, if you just do a little bit of a wiring diagram, they're all, you know, intertwined with each other. So this integration, and quite frankly, the momentum that this integration creates is, I think, what will carry ISOC certainly in 26, but frankly, sets us up for 26 and beyond. A quick note on, on our partnership with the foundation. You know, we're, we are absolutely joined at the hip. Our alignment, you know, I don't mind saying, I think it's been probably strongest now than it's ever been. Our teams are talking to each other on a regular basis and not that they weren't in the past, but, you know, there's a, there's a, that unity of purpose that I kind of overuse that term. There's a lot of clarity in terms of how our teams need to intertwine with each other and work together as, with a unified voice. So, so I think we're creating a model for how, you know, mission-driven organizations and philanthropic arms working together can reinforce, you know, each other for maximum impact. That's really what, you know, the benefit is. So to sum up, I think fundamentally, I think we have a, we have a core strategy that goes out to 2030. We have the partnerships that are so key, and I talked about that earlier. And I feel really good about the team that's, that's, you know, what makes up ISOC. We have a phenomenal team. We have experts that I learn from every day and these guys work so effectively together to deliver some seriously awesome impact. So this is a kind of a pivotal moment for, for ISOC. You know, strong programs, smart systems, empowering communities, all of these working together as one to deliver the impact in 26. I think we're well positioned to hit it out of the park in 26 and, and we're structured financially and otherwise, financially, legally, from a co-funding strategy to really hit the 2030 goals that you've laid out.
Brian? Thanks Yogesh. That the, I, I love seeing these kinds of plans being laid out and, and well-thought-out plans. One thing that I would like to do is, is put forth a challenge. We have seen, especially at, you know, this particular meeting at this time of year, you guys are showing us these metrics and a lot of the times you're blowing them out of the water. Sometimes there's reason behind it. You get extra money and you get more, you know, more ability to focus on it. But I think with some of the challenges that the internet is facing right now, I would actually like to see those goals for 26 be a bit more aggressive and make sure that the staff recognizes that it's better to try something hard and fall a little bit short than to cross some minimal threshold in order to claim success. Because I think the, the impact that we can have by being more aggressive in some of these areas is critical and the, the current environment almost necessitates it.
I think that's, that's very insightful comment. You know, when I looked at some of the numbers and we compared it, a layman's perspective is we're being sandbagging last year with the hopes that we're going to hit it out of the park and look really good. The, the thing that I converged on was is not really sandbagging as much last year or last, when I say last year, I'm talking about 25, this year that we're in. It was a year of learning. We were in the first year of our five-year strategy and we didn't know what we didn't know. So we had to start somewhere. So I think the numbers that we came up with were setting some bars to see, let's see where we hit it. We hit and, and hit it out of park, if you will. We overreached many of these things and you see some of that reflected in upping the game next year. I like the comment that it's okay to stretch ourselves. And if the, if the board is very supportive of the fact that it's okay not to hit all the numbers, because I think we are all, many of us are engineers, we like to just hit the, hit it right on the nail. I think that's the partnership that we need from the board, that it's okay to stretch and it's okay not to meet every goal because we pushed ourselves. So I like that approach.
I have Victor, Laura and then Kathleen. Victor?
Yeah, so I was going to ask somebody else, but now I'm going to just jump on that. So, well, I mean, you can think of it multiple ways. One is you could, you know, it could be a different number or a different goal to reach. Or you can have, you know, kind of baseline and stretch goals. So there's ways to structure it, obviously, you know, that where you can kind of show that you want to stretch out, but there's also some kind of minimal bar and that way you can kind of deal with both. Because there's an emotional attachment to hitting goals, right? If you don't hit goals, even if we're okay with it, there's going to be obviously, people are going to feel emotionally.
It's a morale issue.
Yeah, it's a morale thing. So I'm sure there's ways you'll be able to figure that out. And the, the other, the question I was going to ask, who you originally asked is, and appreciate all the thought that went into the plan, is what do you think your major headwind would be? Because we talk a lot about all the things that are happening and in fact, the headwinds term only shows up once in today's entire series of documents. But what do you think the, the major headwind you will have? If you had to think of the largest obstacle you're going to get through next year to try to kind of hit where you want to be?
Yeah, so I, I think it's interesting you bring that up. And I think you will hear a little bit more tomorrow about it as well. It's, it's the distractions potentially that are about to hit us in the NGO space with the turmoil around the, around the globe in terms of lack of funding for many of these guys. And as we grant out how we are viewed as almost a raft, if you will, for a lot of these entities, how we navigate through that in terms of people that want to get money from, from us to do certain things and how well they align, just kind of getting that optimally figured out is something that's going to be complex. And we talk about it in terms of that changing landscape and how we're going to deal with it. Do we have it all figured out? Not really, but we know that that's something that we're going to have to tackle. And Chris is going to touch on that tomorrow a little bit. Do, do you see other? I mean, I'm, I'm going to pause there and see my colleagues. Do you want to comment on any of those things?
We'll, we'll continue talking about this, so, but Laura is next and, and then Kathleen.
It's a follow-up anyway. So I think, and I realize that, you know, you, you don't have a track record here for a long time. You're not responsible for what I'm about to talk about. But I think going back, certainly last year, we had the same thing. In my memory, and this is like my sixth year on the board, right? I think that the only goals that we have not seen met or exceeded have been foundation fundraising and some of the stuff around the AMS, because that's been kind of a, a problem area. But everything else has been hit or exceeded in my memory. So I think that's kind of a organizational culture of maybe being a little unwilling to stretch yourselves. I like what Victor said about different structures, like here's the baseline, here's the stretch goals. But, you know, I kind of think if you're hitting more than 80% of your goals, you're aiming too low. So.
Okay. Yeah.
So my question in terms of if we're aiming too low is how do individual goals tie in for performance evaluations and potential bonuses to these numbers? So if they're not met, what is that impact besides just morale? Like, because it.
Yeah, and that, that, you're absolutely right. It does tie into individual performance evaluation. Having said that, depending on your level in the organization, you may, your, your variable target is, sorry, losing my words right now. The variable target changes, the composition of it changes between organizational performance and individual performance, right? So the more senior you are in the organization, the more your variable compensation is tied to organizational performance, which makes sense. So I think that there is absolutely room for us to consider how to stretch the goals in certain areas. And, you know, one of the things in the, in the new resourcing environment that we are looking at is how do we bring in implementation partners to allow us to extend our work? So, because we can't do it all as individual staff members, right? So we've experimented So we've experimented with that a little bit this year, and what you do see in this is that that did drive some performance up in ways that we might not have expected, but that tells us something for next year. So I would like to see, I think, us, I would like the ELT to go back. We, you know, I think we can still move forward with this plan, but with a commitment to you to think about stretch goals in some of the areas where we're consistently coming in higher.
Thanks, everybody, for the comments. Yogesh, I wanted to pick up on two things you said in closing. One is about integration. I think you and Chris being so tightly aligned in your vision of how to accomplish this has been a tremendous force multiplier, and that's been really great to see. And your continued work on that, I think, is going to be very good for the organization. So please keep going on that as you go. And the second is, as you're setting these things out, I think it's increasingly clear that you're able to execute on the individual programs very successfully. And I think the set of goals that you have for the programs is one that, you know, perhaps HR, when that's hired in, can help you relate to the specifics of the compensation package, et cetera. But that we have to start thinking over the next year or two years of how they come together into a single focus. We have in the strategy a set of strategic goals. You have in each one of these individual programs, a set of goals. But we often have to think about the outcome. What is the outcome for the mission? How do we get these to reflect on the internet is for everyone? And I think as we, as we think about how to talk about the action plan to the community, we may want to think a little bit more about how we can make that a little bit broader line. That brings us to the end of the open session. So let me thank all of you who've joined us remotely or have watched the recording. Thanks, everybody. We're back in open session now for the Internet Society Board of Trustees, and we have a number of resolutions before us. The first of these is the approval of the PIR budget, and the resolution says, "Resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees hereby approves the 2026 Budget of the Public Interest Registry as presented." Are there any questions about the budget that was presented? Seeing none, may I ask for the motion to be moved? Thank you, Barry, and thank you, Brian, for seconding. May I ask all who are in favor to signify by raising their hand? Okay, that's unanimous. And let me just take a moment before we move on to thank our colleagues at the Public Interest Registry for all their work on behalf of the society and for all of the work they do as part of their own charitable mission. So, thank you. The next item of business is approval of the Action Plan Budget and Board Designated Funds. That resolution reads, "Resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves the 2026 Action Plan and Budget as presented." And the second resolution reads that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves repurposing and designating a total of $1,064,500 to be funded by the Connected Giving Foundation as a restricted grant for board initiatives as outlined below. Rename the Data Transformations to CRM Unification Fund and add $298,500. Rename the ESG Initiatives to Enterprise Risk Management Fund and add $100,000. Repurpose the Human Capital Management System to ERP Unification Fund and add $366,000 to that fund, and replenish the Opportunities Fund by adding $300,000. Because these are together, I've read them together, but we'll take them as independent resolutions. So the first resolution approving the Action Plan and Budget. Are there any questions about the Action Plan or Budget? Seeing none, may I ask someone to move the motion? Thank you, Caleb, and Laura, second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Thank you. That is, once again, unanimous. The second, approving the Board Designated Funds. Are there any questions about that resolution? All right, may I ask somebody to move the resolution? Thank you, Fonke, and Maureen, seconds. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Sagarika, are you in favor? Thank you. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for that. The next item is the approval of the Board Meeting Minutes for meeting number one hundred and ninety. That resolution reads, "Whereas the Internet Society Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the one hundred and ninetieth Board Meeting as presented, resolve that the minutes of the one hundred and ninetieth Meeting of the Internet Society Board of Trustees are approved." Are there any questions about the resolutions or comments about the minutes? Seeing none, may I ask somebody to move the motion? Thank you, Victor, and Brian, seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. That is, once again, unanimous. The next item of business is to review the committee reports, the first of which is from the Finance Committee. Victor?
So this resolution is for the approval of the amendments to the investment policy? And I'll read the resolution. Whereas via Resolution 2022-42, the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves the Internet Society Investment Policy in 2022, whereas the Finance Committee is responsible for reviewing and recommending any changes to the investment policy to ensure it remains aligned with current market conditions, legal requirements, and the Internet Society's objectives. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed and recommended proposed revisions by investment managers, resolve that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves the amended investment policy as presented. So I'll first ask if anyone has any questions, the resolution? If none, I'll ask someone to carry the motion. Ted, second, Fonke? And then, all those in favor? Looks like we have all hands, unanimous. Motion's carried.
Thank you, Victor. Next are the Governance Committee Resolutions. Charles?
Yes, the Governance Committee, the first resolution is about the approval of the amendments to the Bylaws and PIR Nomination Committee Charter. Both has to do with basically including the CEO into the PIR Nomination Committee. So I'll read the resolution, 2025-X. Approval, approve the amended bylaws and PIR Nomination Committee Charter, whereas the Internet Society Board of Trustees has reviewed the amendments to the bylaws and corresponding amendments to the PIR Nomination Committee Charter, resolved that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approves the amended bylaws and PIR Nomination Committee Charter as presented. Yes, any question or who's going to, well, no question? Any question? No? Then, yeah, Barry's moving. Any second? Maureen? So, any, raise your hand to signify your approval of the resolution? Okay.
Caleb, do you approve this one? Oh, thank you. I think that was unanimous. You can go on to the next.
Okay, thank you. So the next one we have is to approve the amendment to the Nomination Committee Charter. Basically, we want to improve the liaisons between our NOMCOM and the IAB in order that we can coordinate better for the nominations or the selection coming in from the IAB for future trustees. So the resolution of the reads as, 2025-X, to approve the amended Nomination Committee Charter, whereas the Internet Society Board of Trustees has reviewed the amendments to the Nomination Committee Charter, resolve that the Internet Society Board of Trustees approved the amended Nomination Committee Charter as presented in the information that you have. So, any question? Anyone to move and to second the motion? Sagarika and Laura? Yeah. So anyone, may I ask for you to vote on the resolution? Yep, I think it's unanimous.
Thank you very much. The next resolution references the approval of the Minnesota Charitable Organization Annual Report Form. It reads, "Whereas the Internet Society, ISOC, maintains charitable registration status in the state of Minnesota, and whereas, as part of the Charitable Organization Annual Report Form, Minnesota Statute Subsection 309.52, subsection three, requires a board-approved resolution approving the contents of the annual form, as well as stating that the board is responsible for determining matters of policy, supervising the operation and finance of ISOC, and certifying the information supplied in the annual form is correct and complete to the best of the board's knowledge. Resolve that the board approves the contents of the annual report form and all supporting materials attached hereto as Exhibit A, and does hereby certify that the Internet Society Board has assumed and will continue to assume responsibility for determining matters of policy, and has supervised and will continue to supervise the operations and financing of the organization. Further resolve that the ISOC Board states that the information supplied in the annual report form and all supporting materials is true, correct, and complete to the best of our knowledge." Are there questions about this resolution? Seeing none, may I ask somebody to move the resolution? Charles, and I saw Brian as a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. The approval is unanimous. Thank you very much. This brings us... Uh, sorry, did I? Sorry. Ah, sorry. The last thing is the Nominations Committee, which I apparently skipped earlier. So Kathleen, over to you.
The Nominations Committee, well, I'll begin with a note. Fonke Barua submitted her resignation on October 31st. In line with ISOC bylaws, I accepted her resignation. Per the Nominations Committee Charter, we have sufficient membership and do not need to find anyone to replace her. The call for nominations was opened on November 3rd with messaging sent directly to our CHAC and OMAC communities. The call for nominations will be open for close to six weeks, closing on Friday, December 12th, at 1500 UTC. Reminders will be issued throughout the open period. We encourage everyone to review both the 2026 Elections page as well as the Call for Nominations and share this information with your networks. In this year's cycle, the Nominations Committee would like to increase nominations from women and young professionals, individuals with accounting, finance, human resources, legal, and/or marketing expertise, those from Europe, Latin America, and the Caribbean, the Middle East, and North Africa, and East Southeast Asia. As a reminder, in this cycle, organization members will be asked to elect one trustee. Chapters will be asked to elect two trustees. IAB, on behalf of the IETF, will be asked to select one trustee. Again, our ask is that you please share the call for nominations with your networks to help spread the word. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Kathleen? Thank you for the report. And my apologies for skipping it in the agenda before going on to the Minneapolis, oh, sorry, the Minnesota Charitable Organization Annual Report Form. Is there anything else for the good of the order that is part of our formal meeting today? Sorry, I couldn't hear you second. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. We are adjourned.